Councilman Gibson, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Certain. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman DeWitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Slackta. Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thanks for being here. We're gonna start now with the public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Okay, hey Carl, you know what this is?
Yes, sir, it's the media.
It's the media, okay. Rick Steinmeier, District 3. I'd like to invite anybody in Benita that needs help with the hurricane relief to a meeting at the First Presbyterian Church at 9751 Benita Beach Road, just down the road here. We call it the First Church, is hosting an event which is co-sponsored by Love in the Name of Christ and the churches of Benita Springs. Everyone from your community who is dealing with issues resulting from Hurricane Irma and wishes to talk with experts and consultants face-to-face is invited. Representatives of the city, FEMA, many local nonprofits will be present, as well as volunteers skilled in the areas of insurance claims and contracting. First Church and other congregations in the community have raised substantial funds to assist people in practical ways as rebuilding continues following the hurricane. It's at 6 o'clock tomorrow night, Friday night, November 10th, from 6 to 8:00 in the McClure Hall, which is a big meeting room at 6:00. And please come, I'll be there if to help anybody that needs help. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Rick. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mark Selden. I live on a royal road, a property that I feel is discernible. I've got a picture here of filling in of a ditch or a swell through the road that is flooding our road up to a foot and a half on our subdivision.
Please speak into the microphone, Mark.
On our subdivision? That is a completely different subdivision than acrossed. Do I want to have to memorize anything? I wrote it down, okay. I live on a private road paved by the residents and paid for by the residents in Pirates Cove, which abuts another subdivision, Section 33, that a developer has that he's trying to sell. They also have a 25-foot easement owned by the public. However, they filled in the swell in order to access our paved road. According to documents that I have, it doesn't matter if it's paved, or if it's dirt, or if it's grass, an easement is an easement. I don't feel that our Section 34 should be burdened with another subdivision's easement. And to put a ditch to stop the flow of water and flood our road, which I have a lot of pictures, Of course, Benita Springs and Lee County all say, "We don't maintain it. We don't do anything. We don't maintain it." Well, no, they don't maintain it. It doesn't stop it from being an easement. Then it's the owner's responsibility of whoever wants to use their easement, not a deeded private road. No permit was ever given to fill in this swell, or permission to trespass onto that paved road. Matter of fact, we have give certified mail telling them to stop the use. Per Audrey Vance email, October 25th, 2010, our property rights are discernible. That's disgusting. I ask, due to the health risk in the stormwater swell, be allowed to flow and the abutting subdivision use their own, public-owned 25-foot road right away. If anybody needs any documents or pictures, I'd be happy to show them to them, but you know what? It's all deeded. And somebody has told law enforcement, code enforcement, everybody to stand down and do nothing. So they do nothing. I get mugged, harassed for going on a public road, although nothing's said about my private road, which is, has signs in every legal aspect to it, everything legal has been done. I'm just kinda fed up, but when you walk through a foot and a half of water because this subdivision wants to fill it in, and that's another thing, the subdivision, the plans that he put through.
Thank you. There's another, at the end of the meeting, there's another public comments section. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward at this time.
Anybody would like to see the villain?
Yeah, you can, yes, leave that right there with Audrey, please.
That's the new villain of the ditch.
Thank, sir, thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to discussion of Hurricane Irma and provide staff direction. Subsection A, presentation of eagle report by Mike Kirby with Community Development. Mike, welcome.
Mike Kirby, Senior Environmental Specialist, Community Development. First, I want to thank you for the kind words last week, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Anyway, I have been monitoring this eagle pair over at Angler's Paradise or River Park for about three weeks now. And I've got a volunteer to helping out, and Sean Gibbons also helping out. So we are current with the eagle, the eagles out there.
And is it plus? Moving forward? Just moving forward. This one? That's the plan.
All right. We'll start off with some history. Eagles are no longer a threatened or endangered species under state or federal regulations, but they're still protected under the Federal Bald Eagle Protection Act and the Migratory Bird Act. Okay, the state of Florida also has bald eagle protections. There's a rule, it was just updated 2017. Benita Springs also has its eagle ordinance, which Audrey and I did in her office shortly after I started here. So we have plenty of eagle protection still in place. All right? We have, in our local eagle protection, Community Development monitors all of the eagles nesting in the city with the help of some volunteers. We have five to six nesting pairs of eagles throughout the city. We report our eagle nest to Lee County, and then they report it up the line. And then we have our own eagle protection ordinance that I mentioned just prior to this, where we use some criteria from that with help. Okay, the River Park Nest. I only have eight slides, so halfway through it, so. U.S. Fish and Wildlife made an opinion on this particular eagle nest. So a biological opinion from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife has a little bit of different criteria than the general, generic eagle protections. So such as, for this particular nest, they realized that the eagles were a little tolerant to development, to noise, to traffic, to this. So the conditions for this eagle nest were slightly relaxed. All right? Such as, the construction setback was only 150 feet for buildings, things of that nature. It's usually 330 feet. Okay? But, and then they allow work within the first 330 feet, but we did specific things for this particular eagle nest, like locate a buffer over here and the lake next to the eagle's nest. Okay? Also, the city incorporated the eagle guidelines from the Angler's Paradise PD. So when they went for their planned development, we incorporated the eagle guidelines from the biological opinion and from the generic eagle protections out there in our own ordinance. So their consultant, Terrell Hall and Associates, prepared a detailed management plan for this eagle pair. Okay? And then, so getting back to the mulching and the recycling operation now, that is outside of the 330-foot zone. So work outside of the 330-foot zone for this eagle nesting pair, because of the biological opinion and the management plan, requires that an eagle monitor watch the behavior. Now, they can work outside during the eagle nesting season, outside of between 330 and 660 feet, but it must be monitored to make sure that the eagle pair is not being disturbed or stressed. Okay? This is it. It's hard to see, is there a little pointer? No, thank you. Okay, it is right here. So if you were to go on the little road from center of Benita Plaza, where the Publix is over here, for her four corners here, and River Park, it's about halfway down. So you look on your left, it's about halfway down, you'll see an Australian pine out in the middle of that field. And then you look over and you will see a bunch of dead branches here, and that's where the eagle's nest is. You can drive down the road, if you stop, you'll probably see it. Here are pictures of the recycling operation. They have a monitor here, which has never caused a problem. They had, sometimes they had been parking two or three cars over here. I went and spoke to the manager of that operations, he was nice enough to alter this and only have one vehicle there, because eagles, traffic and cars don't bother them, but an individual walking around, that is more disturbing to an eagle than someone driving. But it was the amount of people coming out of the cars, so I reduced the cars. So they're at the other end of the operation now. Okay? There is where the big trucks come in and pull the debris out onto the side, and then, So this is the mulching operation, and the chipper, this is the second chipper that I've seen there. The first one was so quiet, you couldn't even hear it. This one's a little bit louder, but the trucks and the beepers are noisier generally than the chipper. And then the traffic noise on 41 is noisier than this whole operation, is where I'm monitoring from. So in summary, the eagle pair has not been disturbed by the recycling and mulching operation so far. Okay? The nest is now complete, as of this morning. The eagles are no longer building the nest, so we saw the eagles just hanging out, you know, perching by the nest. Maybe the female is beginning to lay eggs, you can't really tell if there's eggs in an eagle's nest, it's too difficult to get up there to look. So Community Development will monitor this nest until the eaglets fledge. So one way or the other, you will have us eagle monitors out there, volunteers or Community Development, and both most likely.
Okay. And this is George and Martha, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
It's a new George.
Washington, do they have a full name, or?
That's all we go by.
Okay. I've been approached by some neighbors in my neighborhood when I'm out in the morning getting some exercise, and I've heard from several of the neighbors, and of course, the proximity to Benita Bay there on the Imperial River, and this just being on the south side of the river, obviously, there's concerns there. Could we share this presentation with those folks that have contacted us via email? And if need be, I don't know if you've spoken with those groups, I know there's been some emails around, but this information, I'm sure, would be welcome with open arms with them. They are very active in our community with birds of all sorts, and this would be great news for them, and hopefully alleviate some of their fears that I've been approached with on a personal basis.
I have already started.
Yep.
Yeah, Sandy Robinson, communicate with Sandy and Kate Pagan, who gave a presentation here earlier. We've met out there, actually, I've turned her into an eagle monitor now, so she's gonna help monitor the eagles. And I haven't met Charlie, one of the other vocal people about the eagle.
Yeah.
And James Unland, who's the photographer here, I've met him out at the site, too. So we are all communicating.
Any way that we can pass this information on to the folks that have been on that email about a week or two ago would be very much appreciated, and any follow-up meetings or follow-up information, I would appreciate that very much.
I'll send it to all of them.
Wonderful, and it's good to hear. So I guess, bottom line, short, your estimation is things are A-OK?
They are.
Any concerns? I mean, it'd be nice if the chipper wasn't there and the what-have-you wasn't there, but not a problem?
No, I don't see a problem, and if I did, I'd walk over, talk to the supervisor, and he will correct it.
Right.
Because everybody has a vested interest in this project.
Sure, no, absolutely. Audrey, I see your hands, if it's an emergency, please.
It's actually a clarification question, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. So you mentioned that having a monitor there till fledging, correct?
Yes.
And fledging should be about May 1?
Well, probably before that. These eagles got an early start.
Okay. But it would be sometime in the spring, so it's possible that the recycling, mulching will be done, but we'll still have a monitor on-site in compliance with the opinion? Or will we cease once the monitoring, once the recycling is done?
We'll stop. So the monitoring is to monitor the activity.
Only during the activity?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get a clarification.
Great, okay. Counsel?
I just want to thank Mike, and we had a conversation very early when these points were brought up, and there were some concerns raised, and I had virtually the same presentation on the telephone, and I had suggested that he presented at council publicly, because it would alleviate some of the concerns that people had been expressing. You did a good job, and the more you can disseminate what we're doing, and it's nice to know that the humans can live compatibly with nature. And thank you for what you've done there.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Great, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much. We're now gonna move on to Item B, flooding observations, and this is Councilman Fred Forbes, green sheet 17110422. Councilman Forbes.
Yeah, I'm gonna use our distinguished Director of Public Works to be kind of a navigator through the picture slides. I've got a number of slides that are all aerials of the flood. My reason that I want to show these is I think that since things have dried up, some of us may have forgotten how all of this is interrelated, and it's interrelated by water. Some of these slides are just a sea of water, so I think it would be good that, and I know some of the people in the viewing audience probably haven't seen these slides, so go ahead.
Hang on.
Where are we at?
There we go. There was a presentation, any questions?
Yeah, it's all over. It's all done. We may get off.
He started at the beginning.
I know you're excited about Saturday's game, Matt, but let's just take a step back.
Yeah, let's go ahead with the picture.
Apprehensive. So this would be, the description explains it, but in the foreground here is Dean Street, Matt Feeney for the record. And then you're looking to the north, the Imperial River, it's typically, its flowway would be right through here, the normal course of the river. This is the Imperial Benita Estates Bridge, and this is a portion of the Imperial Benita Estates community. So the next photo is...
And Matt, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I see that September 19th, is that an accurate date?
Yes.
Okay.
I got these...
Which would have put this a week after, right, to the day? Is that right? No.
No, nine days.
No, nine days, nine days, excuse me, nine days after, thank you.
These photos came from an aerial flight that some members of the Lee County Department of Natural Resources were on, so they shared the information with us, so that's where we got the photos, from a helicopter flight. So this is kind of just moving a little bit to the east. This is Dean Street still, this is the same Imperial Benita Estates Bridge. Can you go back, Debbie?
You can go back, you can go back.
Yes.
Okay. I got it. So Quinn Street, is this thoroughfare here? This would be Paulie Saunders and McKenna, and then this is Dean, so you can see the Quinn Street neighborhood in plain view, as well as Imperial Benita Estates. And then the interstate is off here in the foreground. So this is just still continuing easterly. Benita Beach Road here is at the bottom of the picture. This is the Flamingo Island Flea Market.
Flea Market.
And you can see, we're just, we're progressing to the east here, just trying to get everyone their bearings, and we're looking to the north. So here, here you can see, this is, let me get my bearings, now we're looking to the south. No. No, we're still looking north, I'm sorry. So the river, this is the Interstate 75, looking to the north, this is where the river comes underneath the interstate. This is an old branch of the river where some of our water drains up from the Morton Grove community, as well as the Lake Shalimar community, kind of comes underneath a culvert system in the interstate. This is Pinecrest Lane, an area where we saw flooding as well. And this would be Carpenter Lane on the south bank of the river, and Oakland Avenue. Now we're looking south. So basically, we've pivoted from that image. These are the Marni Fields Soccer Fields, Marni Fields Soccer Fields. This is... Southern Pines. The name, I apologize, Southern Pines. I'm sorry, it's been a long week.
Been a long two months, buddy, don't worry about it.
And this is East Terry Street. So the key here is you're looking south, and you're just getting folks a sense. Here, we've crossed, you're looking back north. Essentially, down here would be where Benita Beach Road is, somewhere a little further to the south. This is Kent Road, this would be where the Nature Place is. Kent Road continues along the river, the river and what is, this is the portion of the river that's called the Keel Canal. So this is, lies right about in here. It's kind of hard to see, you can kind of discern it from this water here. This is the Lake Shalimar, or really more formerly, the Lakes of San Souci neighborhood. And then Morton Grove is just on the other side here, so gives you a sense. Pine Lake Preserve is this property here, it actually kind of jogs down into here. So now, we've progressed a little further to the east, and this is Benita Grand Road. Again, Benita Beach Road is just out of the frame here to the south. This is the Keel Canal weir structure, right here, and this would be the normal course of the river as it is in the Keel Canal. This is the eastern half of the Pine Lake Preserve property, it kind of jogs up over through here.
This is Worthington.
Is Worthington?
Next slides are Worthington, they were shot on or about the 14th of September by the drone, and you'll see that it is inundated with water. I will point out, though, that to the best of my knowledge, not more than one residence actually got water inside the living area. But it shows you how badly it was flooded, and it was flooded to that extent clear up until about a little more than two weeks and three or four days after Irma had gone through, which was a problem, and that was mostly caused by the river being so high that it was above the culvert pipes and the swale that drained that big ditch on the south side of Benita Beach Road, runs all the way out to Village Wall. We were getting low flow at best, and then if you go through all those...
You want me to continue to move through?
Yeah, you see Benita Beach Road in, I think it's the last slide of Worthington. You'll see it on the left. And then the last slide...
That would be Benita Beach Road there.
Yeah. It's water, water everywhere. And so what I was hoping that everybody could refresh their mind with by seeing these is the fact that all of this is kind of interconnected. There's a tendency, the longer we get past a flooding event, especially for those that weren't here during the flood, or didn't have the privilege of seeing it high up from an aircraft or helicopter or drone, there's a tendency to look at a community and their problems and think that it's kind of, they can work on that, isolated from the adjoining and surrounding communities. And one other thing, it's, and Matt and I have talked about this, you know, there's, when they built I-75, and you'll hear a lot of the experts say, "Well, that created a dam that has held the water to the east," which is true, it has. There are culverts that go under it, but arguably, some will say not enough. But if you suddenly lifted it up, a lot of that water that's being held back would come right down all the way to the Imperial Bridge and beyond, and make that flooding even worse. So it's something to think about, and this is not just Fred Forbes, this is Matt, I think Jim Beaver would agree with the same comment. Doesn't mean that we don't want to improve the drains, but we've got to be real, real careful. Now, the only other thing I want to say is reiterating something that Jim had said, which is, he believes, and I concur, and I think that Atkins Engineering does, that weather patterns are changing, and we're gonna have more intense rainfall more frequently during the summer. And what that absolutely results in, and I know Deputy Mayor O'Flynn and I made a thorough, a lot of thorough trips out through the DRGR in 2013, and what happens is, is you get more and more rains more frequently, rather than a little classic thunderstorm in the afternoon like Florida used to get, the ground becomes fully saturated. That means that it can't hold anything more, and that means that water that comes in will either sit on the ground, or if there's a tilt to it, it'll flow, that's the old sheet flow. The other thing that Jim Beaver has said, and others, is that it appears that we're going to have more intense storms more often, and that also translates to possibly more either intense tropical depressions, which still throw the water at you, in fact, can throw more than a hurricane, and hurricanes. So that, and then what I've got here, which I think is kind of interesting, is next sheet, and Matt pulled this off with Joel, and this is off the website of the Imperial River, but this shows the different floods that we had, and amazingly, the flood of 95, we actually had much more water than we did. We had more water this time than then. And what that means, though, is at F dot, even though you can argue whether they did enough, when they widened I-75, they did some corrections on drainage, otherwise, it would have flooded, because the 95, I-75 was closed due to high water up just beyond the Liberty Youth Ranch. But here's, there's a lot of information on this chart, including what the current level of the river is. It's, you know, a little more than seven and a half feet at this point. But, and the other thing that we thought, and Matt... But, uh, and the other thing that we thought, and I, Matt thinks they've made some correction, because originally it indicated that once we had that other rain that came in on Thursday, that the, the river re-crested at somewhat higher than it did. Now they're saying it really re-crested essentially what it was immediately following Irma. One little thing that I did pick up, that's not on this chart, that was, I had, I, I had a Uber cab driver that lives out in that area west of Imperial Parkway Bridge. And they arrived back in town, they kind of left in their RV and got back on Tuesday. And, and when they got back, there was water on the streets in that area. On their driveway, they had three to four inches. But they said when they went to sleep Thursday night, it was still about that. And then when they woke up the next day, it was flooding and it got water in the house. So that's, that's the, uh, the history on that. The other thing that, uh, I was going to point out, and that, we don't even need to use the charts to do it. Basically, I think there's, there's one other, under, most communities, and this is a little sidebar, I'm digressing from what slides say, most of them are interrelated. It turns out that, and it's Worthington, which is 800 homes, and that's the one that had the problem, that it just didn't drain out for almost two and a half weeks. They, they, their situation is kind of unique. They're one of the very few communities that if you, if we do some of the things we're looking at doing, which is trying to send water south, actually, it does not affect the rest of Benita, or to put it a different way, it's either going to have little or no effect, but it will have some effect and it'll be in the right direction. Because any water you can keep out of the Imperial River i- is a great thing. The other thing that I, that I, I'm just going to touch on this briefly, but when I came back into Benita from up in Kissimmee on Monday of the following Irma, the 11th, and we drove first to 75, and then we went back over to 95 and down. Every place we went, on either side of our car, that were, where their land had not been developed, there was at least a foot or more of water standing on the roads. I mean, not on the roads, in the, on the undeveloped land, farmland, pastureland, anything. Now, our DRGR, even in 2013, we were one tropical storm away from a flood, because we were at all the kind of conditions we had this time, except we never got a tropical depression, or we never got a hurricane, or we didn't get a bunch of rain real close together, like we created what we call the little or the smaller flood. But it, that DRGR usually has a foot of water standing on almost any ground that's not developed. Or ground that where they haven't built a house and put it on, uh, kind of a earth and pad to raise it out of the thing. Now, if you develop wetland, and that certainly you could classify as wetland, the first thing that happens is that you fill the property, and you bring it up to above the flooding level. Uh, the, ideally, a foot above the flood is real good. Next thing that happens is that you're required by South Florida Water Management to maintain one inch of water on the whole gross acreage. So if you're developing a thousand acres, you have a thousand acres with one inch high of water, that's what you're required to retain. To Benita Springs credit, they require 50% more than that. They require that on that thousand acres, you have to hold a block of water, an inch and a half deep, 50% more. Now, the question, and they also, you have your retention ponds, which is one of the ways they hold the water. The question you need to be thinking on is, when you do that, what happened to the other 10 and a half or more inches of water? It didn't evaporate. It can't, it can't be absorbed in the ground, because the ground's 100% saturated. So there's only two places it can go. It can either go to another lower area and make that flooding worse, or it can go in flowways and drainage stitches towards the river, or kind of a combination of both. So I think, I think if you think about water in that way, you'll kind of agree that, that if we want to do development anyplace, what, forget the DRGR, we need to be thinking about retaining a whole lot more water on the property. And if you go down Benita Beach Road, not in the DRGR, but in that track between the, uh, the Flea Market and Quinn Street, there's all kind of open land there, and it had a foot and a half of water on it. So if, if it's developed, it's going to be raised up, and it's going to be the same drill. So where does that other 10 and a half or 15 inches of water go? It's going to go in the river, because it's right by the river, but the river's going to be too high to take it, so. But it'll, it'll flood somebody else up, out downstream. So that, that's kind of my observations, and Jim Beaver has a presentation on where he's at. And then we have Atkins Engineering here, and, and then we can have a big, open discussion when it's all over with, and including, I'm fair game too.
You're fair game?
I'm fair game.
All right. Miami or Notre Dame on Saturday? Jim? Come on up, please.
I was going to say, it's not Ohio State.
No. Good, good evening, Jim.
Good evening. Um, Jim Beaver, for the record, um, I didn't expect that I'd be doing an update for you tonight, um, given that it's been 13 working days since I last gave you an update.
Welcome to our worlds, Jim.
Well.
Game on, buddy.
Um, work gets done, but it also follows the, uh, arrangement that we set up in terms of the deliverables. So let me tell you about what's been going on, and, um, then I'll be happy to answer any questions. So basically, I want to remind you that what we're doing here is developing a flooding reduction and hydrologic restoration plan. So it's not the Beaver Plan. It's the flooding reduction and hydrologic restoration plan, okay? Um, the Beaver Plan, the first Beaver Plan was done in 1984, when I put together the restoration plan for a property called the Estuaries around the Sterro Bay, after it'd been the violation there, so. You don't want to confuse this with the other eight Beaver Plans that I've done over, you know, decades. So this is your flooding reduction and hydrologic restoration plan. And it's got a series of deliverables that I'm doing for you, among them, the, your legislative agenda for this next legislative session, and projects that you can do in order to reduce flooding within the whole city. So I'm not just concentrating on one neighborhood, I'm looking at the whole watershed systems. And as Fred has shown you, these are all interconnected to each other, and no one area flooded just because of what happened at that one area. This was watershed scale flooding, and it included four different watersheds, not just the Imperial River watershed. It had water from Halfway Creek, Upper Watershed, Spring Creek Upper Watershed, and Spring Creek Watershed, Imperial River Watershed, and water that should have gone to the Cokerachi Watershed, but still is coming down the Imperial River. Um, this is the timeline for what was agreed to as to what the work I was going to do, and I've color coded this now for you. So that if you see it in green, that's a task that's already completed. So we've completed tasks one, two, and four, and we've done four, which is your list of legislative things, a month ahead of schedule. So you've got those, those all completed. And two is what I'm working, currently working on right now, um, developing the projects, fully fleshing them out, working with Atkins, um, to get the data and information that we need for that, so that when we get down to four and five, we'll be able to have their completed report for you on that. So that's our progress at this point, and I'm working on what should be worked on in November, in November. Um, important point, we're going to look at flood reduction. We cannot have total flood elimination in your city. Eventually, there'll be conditions that are so bad that you're going to have some flooding. And the way things are being designed, and as I talked to you about in our presentation just two weeks ago, things in modern design from the water management district's approval process, the basis review, are designed to flood your stormwater system, flood the golf course, and flood the roads before it floods houses in the newer developments. And in the areas of your city which don't have those, that weren't built in this more, this time that we're in now, they didn't have those levels of protection, so that's how ground floor flooding occurs, when the housing is set at the ground level, it's not been elevated, and when the floods come up from precipitation and river overflow, you're at an elevation that's lower than the actual crest of the river. So, no one can guarantee the elimination of all flooding under all potential future conditions. And you shouldn't expect, if you have a road or a building in your existing unmodified floodplain, that you're not going to flood when the floodplain comes up. A river is a dynamic system, and so there's a base course that most of the time it's following within the bed of the river. But if you go and take a cross section of your Imperial River today, you can see there's a terrace above that that fills up as water levels come up in the wet seas, and then a terrace above that, and then you're into neighborhoods in this area, because the, those third terraces were what people built on, um, back in the historic times, and into modern times, 60s, 70s, 80s. And it wasn't until we got into the 90s that you began to see some of the more advanced stormwater, um, surface water management systems that put up the berms and the dikes and the, and the drainage features and so forth. The actual flow patterns for this area should include water flows which go to Halfway Creek. Um, let's see, we do have a pointer. So water should be flowing out of the larger Clue, Clue, Flint, Penn stand, this is the Edison Farms area, out through Halfway Creek and two branches, which then is attributable to the Sterro River, down Spring Creek, and out that way, and then this portion should come down to the Imperial River. And water that's out here should be heading south toward the Cokerachi Basin. That was the historical flow patterns. That has been highly modified in a number of different ways. Um, that has, actually, I-75 has blocked some of that. And other places, canals have been constructed as interceptors. So water that's trying to head south in this direction gets captured by the Keel Canal and shunted west to the Imperial River. There's a number of different modifications like that that you'll see in your upper watershed. So that is one of the reasons why the Imperial River overflows its banks. It's being asked to carry a lot more water than it's actually nature designed it to do. Also, the capacity within the river of its floodplain has been constricted in a number of locations, where people put fill-in and put structures, where bridges have been built, but causeways have been put into the river path, so that as water fills in and there's enough high water, it actually acts as a dam in the river that pushes water out onto the, either side of the landscape. You saw that at, uh, in some of the aerials that Fred showed. And so, these are things that can be addressed with different types of projects. So projects we already started, I've mentioned this before, the Spring Creek shoulder edging, culverts on CSX Railroad in Malagro and Spring Creek, the Bloomberg Grant for figuring out how we can put the watersheds back, Atkins being selected as your engineering firm, and the legislative funding list that you've developed with us. Um, also, this, this is the list of your, um, things that you've taken to the legislature, along with some other projects that aren't flood-related, and these are the ones that, um, are part of the ones that we're pricing with Atkins in, in regard to that. This is additional progress since I last met with you, these are things we've done. I've met with multiple citizens with regard to flooding in their areas, from east of the interstate, west of the interstate, in small communities and larger gated communities, uh, individual houses along the river. And people have told me what their flooding experience was. We talked about options that could address the flooding that occurred in their area, and I've found some very interesting comments from the citizens that I will be sharing with you that, um, you might find interesting in terms of their perspective of whether they want to be in a flood in the future, um, in the places that they are at, versus, um, perhaps not being in that same location in the future. Also, we did the field review, I went out in the field, um, with the folks from Atkins that are here today, and reviewed the site conditions on each places like that to see what was going on. Clearly, the river and number of your tributaries are still blocked by major debris. That needs to be removed, should be removed right now. Um, and, um, I will, see if they want to use the terminology they did when they saw it, but, uh, it really, really have some debris problems in both man-made drainage features and the existing rivers and tributaries here that could be addressed pretty quickly. Um, we feel, I've been field evaluating, data gathering from several specific actions around your city, doing site visits, sees locations, gathering additional information, and I'm writing the port, report. Because if I'm going to have a report for you by the end of December, I need to be writing pieces of it right now. Okay, again, we have both short-term, moderate-term, longer-term, and ongoing solutions that we have to undertake if we want to address flood reduction. And just very quickly, we can look at removing these impediments, just as we've talked about, and looking at those places where the river was crossed by bridges and culverts. If they're too small, make a project to resize them to the right diameter, right size for a better crossing. This needs to be done on a lot of your different road systems here, and in, I think in particular, in that area that I've called the box, which is bounded between I-75, Imperial Parkway, Terry Street, and Benita Beach Road. There's a couple places like that that definitely need this. So like I said, like, solution number two is replace those structures which need to be replaced. For older communities, without a true surface water management system, we can do some improvements within those older communities. And in fact, looking back at some of the previous studies that have been, where you've had flooding before, and where those type of projects have been done, we saw that that either led to a reduction of flooding in this event, or no flooding in this event, for those communities that you've addressed in the past. So some of these features, moving, trying to move a community that's a residentialary that has no stormwater management system to speak of, into one that has some, will help move water off of the landscape as sooner as the crest elevation of the river, river drops, rather than just letting it sit in a pool or in essentially a bowl of land that's at a low elevation. We want to connect the watersheds using a regional, a regional, regional stormwater management system that's constructed within the DRGR to capture water. A lot of that sheet flow and large-scale water flow that we saw in Fred's aerials could be collected, could be kept, managed, treated, and released gradually. And we could actually be releasing before storm events. And this is something that the Water Management District does all the time. When they think one of their water features is going to be threatened from heavy precipitation rain, they'll do their release ahead of the event, so that the river's not being asked to carry everything all at once, but to carry a certain amount even ahead of the storm to get it out of the system, particularly when you don't have the storm surge or the high, high tide that comes with the storm. So this is an opportunity to get better management of your water, and also maybe to re, better ma, release your water into Spring Creek from this feature that we're looking at, create a flowway in that direction. We could change the Keel Canal design to retain more water. Right now, the Keel Canal's basically got one weir on it that's managed in that area, just the other side of Benita Grand. It's adjustable, they can let more water out of it, but only on part of its cross-section. But we could put more weirs up the Keel Canal, to stage water up and hold more capacity. And if you do off-canal storage features, areas to hold water off of the canal, you might be able to hold extra water and then let it release more gradually. We've done this with a number of projects in the region. Um, the North Colonial Waterway is an example, that 10-mile canal does some of that. And there's also an opportunity to do water quality treatment with a filter marsh, as you have your off, uh, main canal storage. Um, we could reconnect, as I mentioned, those connect, those connections to these other watersheds. Where available and you have unoccupied land of different types, set it aside. Don't let it become impervious surface. Let it be available for the river, or the creek, or the system to flood into. Perk the water, let it come back off again. During the period when it's not flooded, it could be used as a public amenity. This is things they're doing in Europe, they're doing it here in the United States, a number of communities. And this can be public green space that's by the river, but when the flooding event comes in, you know, of course, people aren't going out to the park during a flooding event, but the, your park could be your flood retention area. The higher stormwater retention standard could be useful for your community in those areas which are going to be new development or retrofitting an older development. And this is an opportunity to hold more water, rather than, again, let it all go out very quickly. When you do a situation where most of the building's been destroyed, majority of the building's been destroyed, then retrofit it and build it into the new standard. And there's a number of different ways to do that. Um, these are all different examples that are available to move a residence up above the flood zone. In some cases, you can elevate and have, uh, basically a room beneath that's not going to be your living space, but used for something else, or a garage. There's fill, there's different staging, but this is. There's fill, there's different staging, but this is basically, if you go for some of the communities that I've looked at that had the worst flooding, you will find houses there that were elevated, built more recently, ones that are the very old houses that weren't. The elevated houses did not have ground floor flooding within them. The streets, of course, flooded. There's flooding in the community, but it was the ones that were down on the base ground level, the floodplain that did. There's a bit of a problem, though, when you take and start doing elevations for some houses, but not for others. And the elevated houses can actually throw water onto the lower houses that haven't yet been elevated. We can take a look and understand and help educate people so they understand if they're in a community like Worthington or the other new communities that have been built within your area, even places like Pelican Landing and Benita Bay, that their stormwater management system is designed so their lakes, their lakes will flood, then their golf courses will flood, then their roads will flood, and their houses are designed not to be flooded. They allow all of that area to be the sacrificial area essentially for a short period of time, hopefully, short. And then your residences won't flood. And that's indeed what happened in some of these communities. Other communities, because of their positioning in the landscape and because their stormwater management system had a different design and had a invert elevation set that let water out more quickly, were able to avoid that sort of street flooding. And that's something that we can take a look at with some other ideas. Emergency sluice gates. The community here that had the emergency sluice gates was able to release water ahead, ahead of the storm and let water out of their stormwater management system so they got freeboard so that when the precipitation event occurred, it could fill back up again. And so, for those places where the opportunity provides itself, we could have other communities install the emergency sluice gates so they have that capacity to protect their, their particular community. This is not as system-wide as some of the other solutions I've talked about, but it's something that we could do and something when you're looking at a new community to say, hey, you guys should think about this. The, probably would be a good safety measure for your new area. And in order to pay for stuff, in order to do some of these things, in addition to looking for federal and state and grant funding, funding that comes from FEMA when you have an emergency event, you should consider a stormwater and flood reduction utility fee, one that will fund these projects so that you can do the operation maintenance, always have your snagging and cleaning going on on a regular basis. And build the extra structures that you might need to do and improve your culverts and bridges. And improve the neighborhoods to having better stormwater drainage systems for them. And by spreading this out, you'll be able to maybe get ahead of the many disasters which are to come. Because as Fred mentioned, our, our known changes for climate are going to give you more heavy precipitation events in shorter periods of time, whether they be a long depression or tropical storm or hurricane. So, we're not looking, well, we would like to do some of these things, but these are going to have major institutional changes that probably need to be made at the federal and state level. One thing is to look at the problem of agricultural and mine off pumping. These entities are able to get water off of their properties without too much restriction upon that. And as a result, other communities have to deal with the flow that goes then into the Imperial River from this situation. We're not looking at, we, I did look at partial riverside barrier dike or levee construction. Some people suggested, hey, if you put a barrier at this particular location or that location, we looked at that in the field. Two basic problems, there's no place to tie off the levee to other higher ground. So, you'd have to go quite a distance with one of these features to get to anything that was high. And typically, the high things they'd get to would be a major highway or roadway, and then you'd be blocking drainages. So, if you put yourself behind a levee and you box yourself in, if you get a 12-inch rain, you got to find a way to get that 12 inches, that foot of rain that went into your area outside of the levee. Also, in most of your communities where this has been suggested to me, you would have to remove most of the riverfront property to have the footprint for the levee to fit into. So, you're not looking at a situation where in the past, there was nobody on the river or the waterfront, and you can build this feature, and then people fill in behind it. People are already right up on and at the river with canals for their boats to access the river. Levees would, a levee would block those. A levee would remove most of your waterfront residences if you were going to protect areas behind that. So, it was not a practical idea for your city for the Imperial River or for Spring Creek for that matter. And then other things we are not considering because they do more damage than good would be dredging the whole Imperial River like a straight channel, like the Clu-Sahatchee, doing a full levee dike system like you have for some communities along the Mississippi, trying to send your floodwaters to other people's watersheds and let them worry about it. Building a giant dike around the entire crew, which had been suggested in the past, that's not going to work because the water will still have to go from some, go somewhere out of that crew. And we're not going to try to solve one neighborhood's development flood problem by off-pumping and transferring the flood to an adjacent neighborhood. We want to look at a situation where the whole community benefits. And even projects that are like the Logan Flowway to the east side will still benefit overall the reduction of loading into the Imperial River. Anything that does reduce your excess loading into the Imperial River will help all the communities that are along the Imperial River. I want to emphasize again, as I look throughout the city, this was a precipitation flooding event. It wasn't a storm surge flooding event. And so, that's what we're concentrating on here. Whilst there was a small storm surge of three to five feet, the coastal communities had adequate freeboard for that to surge up, go back down without any appreciable damage that I could find in talking with people in those areas. And so, you have to get ahold of me pretty easily. I'll answer any questions you might have, but we also have our engineers from Atkins here today with a presentation to talk about what, what they've observed and the things that they're working on. If you'd like to hear from them first.
Great. Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Question, you mentioned that this is for watershed flowway problem. Are we looking at requiring to do corrective action in all four of those in order to get some relief? I think you sort of answered the question. You said we could do partially, anything that relieved the pressure on the Imperial River. Is it like we, we're facing multiple, multiple projects here in order to really get some consequence? Is that a proper conclusion or is that?
Some of the projects, the bigger projects, will have a consequence just by doing that one project. But those are the big projects. Some of the projects will give you small, small amounts of relief, but it's important relief for your communities, like the snagging and removal of, you know, back to your existing flowway system. To address the total excess loading problem, we need to work in all four watersheds. Some of this is, like I say, short-term, midterm. A lot of it's going to be in the long haul in order to get your river back to the way you, you want your Imperial River to be, your Spring Creek to be. And then these other communities will benefit when they have their water back, too.
Thank you.
Thanks. Greg?
I just kind of piggybacking off, excuse me, piggybacking off of what Amy's saying. Should we be talking to our other partners to the north of us as in the Village of Estero and saying, hey, you're sending water this way, we need your help, whether it's at the legislative level to talk to the legislatures also with us and/or to do their due diligence and help out in some of these areas?
Yeah, there needs to be intergovernmental coordination with Village of Estero, with Lee County, with Fort Myers, and with Collier County. And, but I don't tell, they're not sending their waters south to you. The pattern that was put into place here was before there was ever a city of Benita Springs or a Village of Estero. This, this was put together through a combination of water management decisions, some of which were never permitted, and Federal Highway Administration decisions and road building decisions and a lot of different things.
I guess some of us from our last meeting talking about the pump, pumping of the agriculture. I mean, Benita doesn't have as many farm fields as, you know, let's use with the Village of Estero or unincorporated Lee County.
Yeah, most of those are in, yeah, most of those are in unincorporated Lee County. But Lee County doesn't even have control over the regulation of that. It's the South Florida Water Management District that does. So, we got to coordinate with them as well. But I think this can happen. That's why we do intergovernmental coordination and why it's a regional plan.
Gotcha. Great. Thanks. Pete?
Thanks, Jim. Great job. A few questions. Your map here of the historical flowways, just, I'm sure it's accurate, but I just want to get a better sense of what your sources are for that.
Okay. That basically came from earlier hydrologic work that's been done for your city, so I depended upon your city's prior resources on flowway maps.
Okay. On potential solution number four, which is the large regional stormwater management system, when do you think in your mind you're going to have what when?
Well, we'll have the general outline design for you in December.
Okay.
The process is going to be very complicated because you have an acquisition phase, there's going to be a design phase, there'll be the construction phase, and then there'll always be operation management of it.
Gotcha.
And we'll, we'll hope to show you what those proportions or allocations would be. It also depends upon how big you make it. And it, in some cases, the bigger the better for your flood reduction. The more you can get, get of these lands to do that, the more effect you're going to have overall.
So, in terms of the large farm fields out on Corkscrew, we don't know for sure whether they're pumping out in the summer that, or we do?
We do not know.
Okay.
Records are of this type of activity is not something that's often kept or easily obtainable.
Okay.
So, this is something that we would, I'm, I'm need to continue to explore. And it's very possible that the event occurred and no record was kept.
And what about mines? The same thing?
They should have a better record for the mine.
Okay.
And that's obtainable from the Water Management District.
All right. You mentioned that you had discounted concepts of levees or berms along the river. Is that for each and every possible area?
That's for the areas where people identified to me, they thought that a levee or berm would, would be of use for particular communities along the river.
Okay.
And so, I, I looked at it particularly in those areas between I-75 and Imperial Parkway. There's a number of residential communities, you know, south there that had been suggested, and looked at the properties there. One of the problems with the one location is it's got double oxbows.
Right.
And so, where you would site the levee would be pretty far back on the private property that is there.
Okay.
And there is a public easement for flow relating to the interstate that would have to go through the levee location. So, you would, you know, if you, the way you would get the elevation, you'd have to tie the levee into the abutment, the fill of the interstate, but you'd have to find a way for the, let that water out through the levee if water piled up behind it.
So, have the engineers had input into this analysis or not?
That, that analysis, we've not had input from Atkins yet. I looked, did this work earlier on.
Okay. So, I assume you're going to do that at some point?
If they're assigned to that task. And Atkins will talk to you about the things they've been asked to do with the amount of their contract.
Right. So, so if we had specific, I, I have specific questions about one area that we seem to have labeled South Dean. I don't think it's tonight that we could, need to do and hold everybody else.
And it might.
But I catch up with you on that.
And it might be best if we plan a field trip so you, you can see the situation.
Okay.
As we, as we worked on that, because I, I went out there with folks from the city and I looked at it with the people in the area.
Okay.
And you can see the situation that, that's there.
All right. So, then, similar question. One of, I don't know if it's a deliverable, but one of the things to look at was, is, besides all this macro stuff, which is extremely important, macro projects, let's call it, is looking at individual, possibility of individual, individual fixes along the river in specific communities that were flooded. That is still in front of us?
It's something we can do. And in fact, the option where we're looking at retrofitting the stormwater systems of those particular areas is, is one of those examples.
All right.
I have one community that's like further down to the west that it was apparent that they hadn't completed the stormwater management system that was supposed to be built.
So?
So, if they did that, they'd probably have a better drainage situation for their community.
But just process-wise, is that part of your deliverable in December?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Welcome. Thanks. Mike? Fred?
Jim, could you explain to them, I think at the previous presentation, you mentioned that one of the things that you thought needed to happen was to do an inventory of what these various communities are discharging that goes to the Imperial River and including undeveloped lands and all that, and also determine what the capacity of the Imperial River is to hold water, which I think probably if that was done, it will show that it's already over capacity.
Yeah, actually, that's from a meeting that we all had after the time that I had presented to you. And the idea would be to do a water budget for the watersheds where we looked at what the capacity was for each of these rivers, tributaries, canals would be, and what their volume can handle and what their flow rate they can handle. And then look at what's being loaded into them from particular outfalls, whether it's from an existing stormwater management system or water just flowing as a sheet from a particular neighborhood or natural area, and see what that loading balance is between the capacity and the input. It's, you know, sort of an in and out process. And mathematically, this can be done with these hydrologic model, models, the Mike Shee and the Mike Levin model, which has already been developed by the Water Management District. You'd basically just have to run it with these questions in mind. And you could also then determine what's the unused capacity that's missing in Halfway Creek, in Spring Creek, and to the Coker Hachi. So, that can give you a good measure of how much you could safely send down the Logan Flowway or through new connections. Because the balance of this all is you need to send the right amount of water to the watersheds they belong to from their own watershed. You don't want to send Imperial River water to Spring Creek, which some people actually have recommended in some of your past studies by others, which should not be done. And you don't want to send Imperial River water, you know, to Coker Hachi. You want to send Coker Hachi water to Coker Hachi, spring to spring, halfway to halfway, and then let the Imperial deal with the Imperial.
Speaking of which, out east is a big part of the, well, I'm going to call it part of the watershed, but that's really my question. You and I have talked about this a little bit, out by Lake Trafford and Camp Key Strand that goes south. And I think you've indicated to me that you think there's a bit of a saddle to the west of that, so that more water generally goes south, not toward us. And there are people at the Water Management District seem to think different. Do you have any insight into that? Maybe when it comes up, it comes our way or?
Well, it's again a capacity issue.
Right.
If the Camp Key Strand is constricted to be unable to carry the full flows that it should have because the Camp Key Strand has been filled into.
Right.
It's possible now that Lake Trafford fills up very fast, the swamps around Lake Trafford fill up, and Camp Keys can only take so much water southward, then the water's going to try to find the next.
Where else can it go?
Location. But there is a, biogeographically, there is a more raised area in the watershed separation. And perhaps I should go back. We even have ones before that. When you take a look at where the flowways were here historically, you can see that basically, oh, this is actually generated from a statewide flowway mapping system that we captured.
Okay.
On the internet. So, that's a source for that. You can see that in this area here, the actual flowway for the Imperial River is this. And these systems are actually wanting to go to the south. So, there's even, these tan areas are upland areas, relatively speaking.
Oh, okay.
Relatively speaking. You know, there, it might be an inch or two higher.
But they're higher.
Yeah. And so, that would tend to move the water in another direction besides toward the Imperial River. And the natural flow pattern in all of this part of Lee County is to move water from the northeast to the southwest. And over and over again, you'll just see bands of that, whether it's six-mile And over and over again, you'll just see bands of that, whether it's Six Mile Cypress all the way up in Fort Myers to here. All those strands want to go that way. But once you start heading over further to the east, all the strands go from north to south and don't have that bend in them. And that's just part of the geography, geology here.
Jim, so you're saying that that water flow, I guess, kind of to the right, just north of Worthington and out where Councilman Forbes lives, traditionally, that water would hook up with the Coo Coo Hachi?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And back when this, back before they dug the deep canals, that's where it went. And even after the ag was operating out there before it became residential, within the ag operations, you saw flowways running through the ag fields, north to south, letting the water that they put out head in that direction too. But once the deep canals were put in, shunting everything along the Anita Beach Road or the Keel Canal to the Imperial, that's where it went.
Right. All right. Any best guess as to how much water?
I'm not going to
Yeah.
I'm not going to posit that. As a scientist, I don't
Okay.
do that kind of guess. I would say though that you may be looking at, with the three combined, a third more water going into the Imperial than normally would have gone into the Imperial.
Right. And that's been going on now for quite a while?
Yeah.
X number of years, 25 years.
When I was a wee whippersnapper and I used to come down on old US 41.
Right.
And the Wonder Gardens was the big feature in the city and there was no anything. This was a very different flow pattern. So it's happened within my somewhat long lifetime that these changes were made. There was no interstate to interfere with capacities. And a lot of the changes in building into what's the DRGR today, the way they did agriculture in those days was different. And you're probably familiar with this. People would grow their crops when the ground was dry and then leave and let the fields flood. And it killed the nematodes and replenished the nutrient value of it. And then they would wait for it to dry out again to go back. They weren't trying to keep everything, you know, dry in the wet season and wet in the dry season. It costs a lot of money to do. It wasn't the old way of doing things.
Yeah. So I guess when you look at our DRGR, that's obviously on the north side of Anita Beach Road, and you look at that flowway, my logical conclusion is it probably shouldn't even be zoned for one house per 10 acres. Because what are the, I mean, the chances, the likelihood of the flooding is a mathematical certainty.
Well, it's very clear that if you live in a natural Florida landscape with natural Florida elevations in this part of the state and you have an upland, and your upland is a hydro pine flatland, you will have water across your upland for about a month each year.
Let me ask it another way. And I'm not trying to put this on Lee County, but it's just before we were a city. And that was zoned by Lee County. And these projects south of Anita Beach Road were approved by Lee County, and there again, not casting a critical eye. Walk me through the logical or illogical process of how building permits were approved over there.
I really can't do that for you since I wasn't involved with how they permitted things back in those days. I can say that I've, in my years of work in different agencies reviewing projects, I've seen everything platted in every place. So I one time had some, when I was working for the Department of Environmental Regulation, which is the forefather of DEP, I had some people from Germany ask me to, you know, they couldn't find their lot. And they called up the office and I said, well, I was going to be down in the Marco Island area and look, doing some other things. And I'd meet up with them and see if I could help them puzzle it out because I knew a little German. And we went and took their plat map, and their map, their property was in the Gulf of Mexico. And that's how it'd been sold and platted and so forth. And all through Florida, there's basically entitlements over swamps and wetlands and pieces of submerged bottoms. And it was just the way people would draw up the landscape. And then your old rules about, you know, homesteading, people basically were dependent upon being smart enough to know where they were building. So if you owned the property, you got to build on the property. And you dug your well and you put in your septic tank or your outhouse. And so that created the first landscape we had here. Land use regulation really didn't get strict in the environmental sense in this whole area of the state until the earlier 1970s. So a lot of stuff was permitted and allowed in the 60s with no consideration about whether it would flood, whether they had the proper potable water, wastewater disposal, or anything like that.
Are there any, and I know it's going back a ways, but the 1960 Hurricane Donna, are there many comparable photos that exist to your knowledge?
I do not know of any off the top of my head, but there are regular aerial photos taken every year for what are called ready maps. And those are produced by overflights of fixed wing airplanes at certain times of the year. But they wouldn't necessarily be up flying right after a tropical storm. They generally try to do it in the wintertime when the cloud covers the least and things are clearest. So I would say, one thing we do use the old ready maps for, and they go back to World War II, is they can help us identify the locations of the flowways, what was wetlands, what was uplands, even if it was a photo taken in the dry season.
Right.
So you might go to your ready map source, and there are sources of these in GIS from the University of Florida.
Right.
But now I don't know of anybody photo documenting flooding. Most of the Donna photos I've seen have been like, you know, the buildings destroyed, the mangroves destroyed down at Punterasa and so forth.
Right. One last question for you, maybe a bit of advice here. As we look with the South Water Florida Management District, obviously work closely with them in the short term, the medium term, and the long term, obviously. I guess just in a sense, it's surprising to me, but I'm asking for advice as Councilman Forbes will be going over into the next meeting, to get on their agenda. Do we make a request? Do we, you know, what do we do to get on their agenda and on their radar screen?
Well, I think you want to talk with their staff first to see what items they think are timely to be agended. But my first ask of them would be assistance in paying for the clearing and snagging. Get them to help fund getting the public waterways opened. And any canal system that they're responsible for, work done on that.
Right. And to shoot a hole or to blow open a hole? In the theory that it's east coast heavy and the projects are east coast heavy, any validity to that? Or is it just, you know, the persistence of us following up with them, getting on their agenda, getting on their radar screen, and working with them on the long term? What are your thoughts there?
I've seen it work in many different ways over many different boards. So sometimes the west coast gets a lot of attention, sometimes it doesn't get any attention. You do have west coast board members. They're a good person to work with, and they will help introduce you in a friendly way as basically your advocate to the Vatican. You know, so they'll help move you into the procedure that they lay out. But my suggestion to you is, until we have this report done, I wouldn't agenda anything with the Water Management District. I'm going to be talking with Phil Flood here and with our local offices to go over this. We do have meetings already scheduled with Lee County, with Raul Nolini. He's asked to coordinate with us, and we're going to do that, to look at those things about the projects here that could be shared and ideas and so forth. And they may have some ideas to add to the project.
Right.
So we've started that process. If you want me to start doing outreach to other governmental entities, then we need to talk about when you would like me to do that and how the expenses of that would be covered. Because within the scope of services I did with you, it's the report, not these other things beyond that.
Okay. Counsel, anything else?
Yeah, Jim, just want to fill in a few points here on the snagging. We did have a meeting with the Water Management District, and one of the things that came up, actually, Raleigh Adalini brought it up, was an interlocal agreement that was in place in the four years subsequent to 1995. So that's clearly something that we have raised or should continue to pursue with them. It relates to that. Also, in the near term, I have the impression that the DEP, Matt's here, Carl, the DEP is doing snagging right now. Is that correct?
Yes, we do have state employees in the river this week. Yes, sir.
So maybe the longer term delivery mechanism for that would be that interlocal agreement, if that's what was in place before.
Do you know if your interlocal agreement's still active and valid?
No, no, it's not. It died.
And that's a good thing to take to the board.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's exactly the point. So that expired, according to Ms. Adalini, in, I guess, 1999. All right, right before we were formed. But it covered Lee County.
Yeah.
Including the Imperial River. One other thing, if you may not be aware, on the stormwater utility, we have already tasked staff to come up with an RFP for a stormwater utility in town.
Excellent.
Yeah. I think that's it for me.
Okay. Counsel, anything else, Greg?
I just had one other question. When you talked about doing the, I guess you'd call it the study to see how much the Imperial River can handle, is that in a perfect state with none of these things in it? Or is it in a current state?
In current state.
Okay, so.
It's no reason to worry about the way it was before Columbus got here.
Well, I don't mean that. I mean, if there was no, if, after the snagging, that's my question.
Yeah, it would be a river that's not with
Cluttered.
barriers and things in it.
Gotcha, okay.
But the river in its current configurations.
Configuration, I understand that. I'm just saying like, the engineers, I guess Atkins is going to come up, and like you said, it's full of stuff now, debris now. It wouldn't be on what it is today.
Yeah.
It'd be what it would be in its perfect, normal, perfect state.
The interesting thing about these models, and Atkins can be explaining to you much better, you can actually model it so you put snags and blockages in it and then see what happens.
Okay.
You know, and so then if, the nice thing about this model, I can say, hey, I make this culvert from this size to that size, then this changes in the river flow.
Gotcha.
And we get improvement or we don't get improvement. So that's a strong utility for these models.
Okay.
And you could look into the future as you consider a future land use decision. Like, let's say I want to put, someone proposes putting a lot of impervious surface in this area. How will that affect the river?
Okay, good.
All right. Well, I'd like to bring up the gentleman from Atkins I've been working with.
Wonderful. Thank you.
This is your advance, this is your reverse, and this is your pointer.
Which one is what?
This is the advance. This is the advance, the big one.
And this is return. Okay.
Good evening. How you doing?
Hey, good evening, Counsel. My name's Mark Irwin. I'm with Atkins. Maybe just a quick history of Atkins. One of the things locally we've done, we actually worked with Collier County to develop their watershed management plan back in 2012. And since then, we've continued to work with them to help implement some of their projects. And including one we've been working with them on very recently, similar to the Logan Street. It's a flowway spreader swell type restoration, water diversion project to help restore traditional flowways. So we do have a little experience in that area. And one thing I'd like to preface before I get started here is we've just kind of gotten started on this, so we went in the field. So you'll have to forgive me if I don't know. There's a lot of history here with this watershed. I'm not that really familiar with it, but I'm going to do the best I can and talk about what we've seen already. We went out with Jim Beaver, just some initial overall observations. Jim Beaver, some of this kind of goes over what, some of what he already did, and maybe it's a little duplicative, but bear with me. It's about a 300 square mile drainage area that enters the Imperial River, and it all comes, a lot of it comes through the Keel Canal. Mr. Beaver talked about that quite a bit. And this, the water coming through that canal and through the structure is probably the largest contributor to, in the river flooding. Projects that can really divert water from that, particularly restoring natural flows, which I just talked about, is really one of the best ways to kind of help this. It's one of the best ways beneficially to help some of that downstream flooding through the river. And really, understanding the flows across the entire watershed, the capacity of the river relative to those flows is really the first element. I mean, really, you've got to understand the watershed very well before you can start making decisions and understand the impacts of all these projects and what their real impacts are. The extended residence time of the floodwaters obviously was the largest attributable problem for the entire watershed. It being inundated for two weeks. In fact, I just watched the drone videos for the first time today. And it's, you know, it was very eye opening. And you can see weeks are needed to drain the system. That's because there's a very large drainage area. It's very flat. Water moves very slow and sheet flows over that area over a long period of time, which is the reason that water just continually drains through that canal and out through the Imperial River. And really, again, to understand this, we, a really detailed engineering and watershed analysis is really required to get a full understanding of the entire picture here. In the short term, in terms of prior to next hurricane season, projects, I mean, as we all probably know, that take a long time to get going and to, you know, design and build and things like that. So just prior to next hurricane season, debris removal and culvert replacement are probably your best bets. That's, you know, that's going to help certainly some localized flooding. And it may help some of the flooding along the river to some degree. It's not really known now exactly how much, but it certainly could.
Jim said, are the modeling?
Yeah, there's some modeling.
Detailed analysis?
Yeah, the models can look at that. So, and there is an existing ICPR model. There's several models in the area that we could use to look at channel hydraulics to get an idea of the debris removal and the snags and how much that may or may not help for the river hydraulics and how much lower the flooding may or may not be. And so this Logan Street Flowway was one of the projects that was at the top of the list. And I think we would agree with Jim Beaver that that is certainly one of the better projects to look at here, diverting water from the existing watershed back to its historical flow regime or the flowways that it went through is going to be one of the best ways to remove water from the system and to try to lower flood stages in the river. Some other, you know, the future conveyance for relieving these upstream conditions is, you know, that's from all of this crew land, and that's where we want to take that water and put it back where it was going. Some of the other things that we noticed, and this is just, again, building on what Jim had said, subdivisions that fall, some of those fall right within the FEMA floodplain, such as the Quinn Street area and the IBE. Those are going to flood to, unless, the only way to really stop that is to build a dike or a berm around that. And that's really cost prohibitive. You're really transferring the problem downstream, and that's not something I don't think is necessarily, you almost have to compensate, or you do have to compensate for that somewhere else. And there's really nowhere to do that. So maintaining a pumping system, it's all, I mean, certainly anything can be engineered, but this would be very, very difficult to do and very problematic. Permitting would be difficult, so it's certainly not something we would want to recommend. It would, you know, displace the water to some other place. It's just not, you know, something we do. If you do that for some people, then other people might say, hey, well, I'm in the floodplain too. Why don't you take me out of the floodplain? So maybe it's not the best precedent set as well. Now, there's areas that are further from the river that could benefit from smaller projects. And these have a lot better opportunity to do affordable projects, smaller projects that can help local tributaries that drain to it. Maybe something, say, such as Morton, the Morton Groves, I think it is. Sorry, trying to get all the names.
Right.
Right.
So we talked, we've been back and forth with the Councilman Forbes quite a bit on what we can do, what some of the best ways to, we can use this funds, the initial funds, to kind of look at what's been, you know, what's been done. I think the idea is to build on what Jim has done. He's done a lot of good work. He's got a lot of great ideas. But maybe take some and put some engineering, a little bit of engineering behind that and find out from a conceptual feasibility standpoint how feasible these really are. Things are really flat here. It's tough to move water around and get things where you want to go. So, you know, modeling and some analysis like that would be, go a long way in terms of finding out the feasibility and what might need to be done to get a project like, say, Logan Street going. So we would look at that. We would analyze some of the costs, and Jack will talk about that in just a few. So we would look at that. We would analyze some of the costs, and Jack will talk about that in just a few minutes, in terms of elevating the buildings that are in the floodplain and what that may cost to try to help some of the people that are in the floodplain and that were flooded as part, along the river as part of the, as part of the, the event. And then propose some future actions with FEMA hazard mitigation grants. And another thing we could do, and I think, you have, Jim's done a lot of good work. There's a couple of other studies. Lee County has a study that was done. You have a water, you know, city watershed management plan that was done that I've only just been able to glance at so far, forgive me. But, and so there's all of these different projects, different documents, and kind of vet through some of that from our perspective and with Jim's help, and maybe come up with a high-level inventory of, of what could be done or what kind of maybe ranking these projects. So I'm going to turn it over to Jack. He's going to talk about emergency management.
Can we ask some questions about that presentation, if this seems like a dividing point?
Sure, no problem.
I just had a few.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate you, new on a job, so to speak, et cetera, yeah.
Sure.
But I have a question about, about two or three slides back on the top of the page. You talked about certain solutions being cost prohibitive.
This guy, I'm thinking.
Yeah, and my, my question is, I'm, I'm sure, since you've been around the block some, that intuitively you feel that. But I'm just wondering, doesn't the real technical work have to be done at some point to really determine that?
Well, we certainly.
Because one person's cost prohibitive is the other person's, we've got a FEMA grant to, to fund the cost. So that's, are we jumping to conclusions, is my question?
That's a good point. May, maybe a little, but I think from a, from a feasibility or detailed analysis later on in a big picture study, that's something, you could look at anything. I mean, we certainly could look at that, come up with it and say, hey, here it is, and this is what it would cost, and this is what it would take to build it, and this is what it would take to permit it, and compare that to something else that could be done.
Right.
So it certainly could be done. I mean, that's just, you're right, that's perceptively from that.
They come to the mic.
Yes.
Until you do that detailed analysis, and the council did approve one point eight million for a fairly big study that would take, look at the whole watershed, identify, you know, what, how important, how all the pieces fit together, what's feasible, what's not, and then take projects that are identified as feasible to a thirty percent design.
Are you talking about asking for a grant for it, like, right?
And, and, yeah, the, the grant, the legislative grant that went in last week to the, to the.
The only reason I raise the point is that if you live in that area, you know, if you had a house there, I had a house there, you'd want really a little more science behind a conclusion.
I certainly realize that it's very easy for me to stand here and say that when it's not my house in it. So I definitely realize that, so, and it is perceptively. But certainly in a, in a big study analysis, you could look at any of these, and, and then you weigh it. You know, you do, there's a cost benefit analysis, I think, is what you would want to do.
Exactly.
And find out what projects, you know, you could get extra funding for, and where that would come from, and you, you rank those accordingly.
Okay, we're on the same page.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where does water retention fall into these projects, or these that you're talking about? Because there, there doesn't seem to be it. You know, we talked about trying to do different water retention east of the city.
Yeah, that, that is one of Jim's projects that we talked about.
So would you be involved in costing that out or anything like that, or not right now?
That's not one that we, we've been back and forth quite a bit with Councilman Forbes on what we all kind of think is the best use of that money. And we couldn't, that could be one. We kind of think the Logan Street is, has a lot of benefit. It's also supported, what I hear, is supported by the Water Management District, which is a good thing. Not that a storage facility wouldn't as well. We know, for instance, how much that thing could store and how well it would work. Here in this area, and especially in that area, so groundwater and surface water almost become one. So storing that water, it may just seep through it, and it's going to at some rate. How much that rate is, I don't know. So you can store water, and it would help some. To what degree, I don't know. Just standing here without an analysis. But the Logan Street one, just taking water, moving it, diverting it out of the watershed and sending it where it was going before has multiple benefits. You know, it has the flood benefit. We know that we can remove water by pumping it out. And also, it's restoring historical flowways. So it does have, kind of have multiple benefits. That's one of the reasons we
Okay.
kind of looked at that one.
But does that mean that, well, I think what you're telling me, that, that that's probably a more effective and efficient way at this time. But if, if the flowways, oh, we're getting a lot of flowway, excuse me, from the northeast, yeah, outside of the city, and that these waters are coming into our city, it seems to me that we would want to hold them somewhere and release them at a more reasonable rate. You know, particularly if, if we're not, it, it'll take some time before we establish all those other flowways from the other three rivers. You know, I, I understand where the Imperial River is, is the source of flooding primarily. But don't we also have water issues from sheet flow that comes from the northeast?
There are some, there is some of that as well. Most of the water that sheets, as I, my week of getting accustomed and acclimated to all this, comes down and sheets into the Keel Canal for the most part. I think most of that, that's where it goes. How much and what percentage, I, I certainly can't tell you at this point.
So things that are coming from Fort Myers goes into the Keel Canal?
Not Fort Myers. It would be much further inland.
Or from Corkscrew Road? Does that come to the Keel Canal?
Corkscrew Road?
It's just north of here?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it's premature. I don't think he knows yet.
Yeah, I, we just haven't looked into it enough. I mean, I'm trying to, I'm sorry.
No, I, I understand what he's saying, but that's what my question is, that, that we're focusing on the
Coochahatchee?
The Coochahatchee and the Imperial River.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas I think that we have interest in, in addressing these other issues and whether, whether, are they, are they.
I think you would look at all of the, I'm sorry.
That's not for him. That's for us to figure out.
Correct, but if we're not going to, if we're not going to analyze it, how can we figure it out?
We need to have a discussion about it.
Yeah.
And I think you would look at all of these options going forward on a really, a much bigger level engineering study. So I think the idea was, what were we going to spend this first part on, and what was the priority?
Well, and I think that's where Amy's getting, is that we're not a hundred percent sold on the Logan being the priority.
Okay.
And that's what she's asking, I believe.
Okay.
Well, I, but I am sold on the idea that we need sort of a, an overall total picture of where all the water is coming and going and all these other things. And maybe that, those projects will fall out of that.
Another way of putting it, I think, is, and this is not for them here today, it's for us to figure out with Fred, is we need engineering resources to accompany Jim Beaver's ideas.
Correct.
And his ideas are obviously more extant, extensive than Logan Road.
Right, exactly. He had like seven kinds.
Could I interject a couple point? Number one, the, it's real easy to get to a false position of thinking that when Jim gets done at, on January or thereabouts, that we're going to have all these designs.
No.
And we're not.
We're not saying that.
Well, there are questions were asked that kind of were along that. I just want to make sure we understand that. Secondly, assuming we get one way or the other, whether it's from FEMA, the legislative initiatives, combination of maybe South Florida Water Management chipping in. If you do the, the thing where you study all these troubled areas, as was proposed, is in that one point eight five million dollars, there's where you're going to get designs. There's where you're going to get an evaluation of diking versus pumping versus elevating and things like that.
Can I, can I interject?
Yes.
Counsel. So one of the other reasons that the Logan Street was kind of maybe a little higher priority or one that we came up, is they're designing that street right now. So if you're going to look at that, now's the time to design the street so that you could have and fit a flowway into that corridor right there. So, and I don't know the timing of that project, but I have seen that there's, it's going on. So now, really now's the time to do that. So that's, that might be one reason. Another reason is there's a prob, as I understand, there's a lot of property acquisition to do a storage reservoir. So that would take a lot of time. So maybe that, I'm not saying that that's not a good project and maybe isn't even the best project at this point. But in terms of how far off that might be to actually construct or just, you know, those are maybe some of the other reasons, so.
All right. Okay, thank you. And then, trans, part two. Act two.
I'm Jack Hampson with, with Atkins also. And I mostly wanted to speak to the fourth bullet up there that, that is part of our initial work. We could take a fairly comprehensive look at what's out there and propose future actions, including, you, one of the reasons that we were selected is because we have extensive experience with FEMA in the emergency management side, with writing hazard mitigation grants, and, and and we also work under the state term contract, and that's the wrong way. Yeah. Atkins Emergency Management footprint basically is nationwide, and that, that spans everything from doing emergency management plans to doing debris management to doing hazard mitigation grant applications. And we also have another division of Atkins that actually works for FEMA reviewing grants. So we have, we understand the grant process from both ends, and I have a list of some of the clients that we've worked for and, and successfully helped them write hazard mitigation grant plans. We've been doing this for quite a while, since we were PBS and J before Atkins. And we do have this Florida state term contract. So beyond this initial thirty thousand dollar effort, if, if you wanted to, to take some of the recommendations that we can put together and, and you could, you wouldn't have to wait to put it out to necessarily an RFP to have us take this thirty thousand dollars a little further for you and to help you with grant preparation after everybody's agreed on what are the priorities for the grants. Which is pretty much, those are the items that I just spoke to. But I think the, between the technical expertise and the programmatic experience with FEMA and a lot of the projects we do are these, these build back stronger type projects. If you're, if you're doing a, fixing something that was damaged in a hurricane, you can get a hundred percent again of the project cost to build it better than it, rather than just repair it. All sorts of details of the things that, that our folks could bring to the table to help you out on that level. So that's pretty much all I wanted to.
Well, I, I just want to comment on that, because this is one of the things that I think we really need help. I know this is not part of your contract, and I think, because when we look at these projects, I like to analyze them in part, in conjunction with where we could get help with the financing, because it seems to me like these projects, it's obvious that they're very costly, much too costly for a community our size. So, and I don't feel that we have a full understanding of where these things that we're interested would mesh with the kinds of things that are being offered, certainly FEMA or any of the other agencies that might help us. So I think that's one area where I think we could use a lot of help. And I was hoping that we would be starting to quantify some of these projects and understand how it all fits in.
Well, I mean, thought, as part of this initial thirty thousand dollar contract that I need to send you all, by the way,
We have to sign it?
Would be to, to, to try and look at these projects that have, that have been proposed and say,
Right.
you know, which ones do we feel we could most effectively
Correct.
help you get a grant for, and.
So that would, that would be outside of the contract that we have now, is what you're saying?
Well, the, the, the work of writing the grants and all of that would have to be outside the, the work of analyzing the ones that are there and saying, these are the ones that, you know, that looks like would be the best candidates to move forward with and a timeframe for that, and, and a, you know, plan would be part of this contract.
Okay, well, that's, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Greg?
No, I just, I guess going back to our original discussion is that, have you, at Atkins, have you guys seen Mr. Beaver's report so far? So I, just going back, like, kind of going back to what Amy was talking about with the Coochahatchee, I mean, that's down on potential item solution four. I'm just saying, in part of your scope of work, wouldn't it be beneficial to use some of that mon, the dollars for, to look at the solutions one, two, and three, which are, I guess I would call it higher on Mr. Beaver's priority list? To look at those and cost of, cost them out and to do your analysis on that, rather than the Logan. And to kind of piggyback on the Logan, yes, it's being designed now. So whenever it's being designed to do the roadway, why can't we task that engineering firm? Maybe not you guys, but to, we want a flowway through there. You guys help with it, but whoever's designing the road.
We wouldn't be doing much more than looking at the quantities that are coming off the subdivisions and the permitted amount that is allowed to be sent down and saying, you know, for that two hundred cubic feet per second, you know, this, this design isn't going to work. You've got to make the canal wider.
Well, that's what I mean. That's what I'm saying. I'd say you guys could quantify that, that side of it. I mean, I don't know how much that would be.
But then, one of the reasons we did this was because you already sent the, the three projects to the Legislative Initiative with cost estimates that probably will stand well enough based on the, on the past experience. So with a very limited amount of funds to spend, we thought, rather than reinvent, you know, do that again with those three projects that went out to the Legislative Initiative, maybe we should look at some of the other ones further down the list.
Yeah, to jump in on that, sorry. Just for instance, I, I looked at potential solution number three.
Right.
Is to retrofit older communities. I mean, which communities are we, that might be part of what, what this is, is that maybe the Logan Street's kind of a regional one project helps everywhere. Maybe that's the reason that I think that we kind of looked at that. Whereas this, I mean, we could, we look at which communities over which communities. I mean, that might be one decision. I mean, we could look at these other ones as well, and we did talk about those. But for the other reasons is kind of why we decided on that, so.
Okay.
Okay. Pete?
You know, I think it's a great presentation. I have questions about, I mean, I think a lot of progress has been, a lot of great progress has been made. I totally understand why the focus on Logan is there. But I think we need to have a discussion, just a continued discussion among ourselves about what the next steps are, how we progress on this, and who we work with, et cetera. So, but thank you for this.
Fred?
Yeah, I was going to ask Jack if, is it, is it correct, am I correct in saying that you have successfully participated in developing FEMA grants for elevating structures?
Yes, yeah.
Is it, is it true that you've also successfully participated in designing and getting FEMA grants for either dykes or whatever you want to call it in areas?
I would have to check. I, I would assume that pretty much any mitigation project that FEMA will, will grant you for, we've, over the last thirty years, we've, we've helped to develop.
What about getting money for reservoirs and things like that to mitigate flooding? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I'm going to have to ask to coordinate with our experts on that and get you, get an email.
And, and I, I want to reiterate one thing. They've only, you know, they've only been in Benita Monday and today. And even though we approved a contract about, I guess it was two meetings ago, we went around about what we were going to do for a scope of work, and then we ended up having to do the Legislative Grant and pick a number. So they didn't do that. That was one of the things they were going to do. So what we're trying to do now is to figure out the best use of thirty-five thousand, not thirty thousand. And it, and if somebody has something else that they think they should work on, that's fine. They're, they're not going to design Logan Boulevard. All they're going to do is get the numbers and all that that have to be designed into the thing by that company that's doing the work for Matt. And I think they're going to be in construction within months. They're going to be in front of you all with a big decision to build a roundabout or not. Because there's, there's some of the people out there that don't want a roundabout, and then there's another group of people to do and all that, and they're, they're going to come in with costs and all that. But that, that doesn't affect flooding or water drainage.
I'd want to point out that that was just one of four items we were talking about.
Right.
Addressing, including the, the costs and counts for elevating buildings, the high level inventory that you were asking for in terms of the relative regional contributions to the flows into the river from the different, the different sources and watersheds. I think we have enough modelers that they could give us a high level estimate underneath this initial contract.
I'm sure Jim Beaver will tell you this. There's a lot of existing resources that are available or out there. As Bill of Astero's doing work, I'm sure to be happy to share data with us about the entire watershed.
Yeah, and I know that our Mike Shee modeler is already knows Mr. Kopp, who did the Lee County Mike Shee model.
Right, right. He's, he's one of the ones working with Astero right now. Roger is.
And Lee County has projects going.
Yeah, that's.
Lee County is investigating projects to be done in Lee County, so that needs to be coordinated with them. I think Waldorf Engineering is working for Lee County, for the Southeast Lee, so they need to be touched.
Yep. Okay. Oh, thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, Carl.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, one of the things that we're hearing is that as we are a federally designated disaster community, we will also be having the opportunity for other disaster-related agencies through the federal government that open up funding opportunities. So we want to make sure that what we, as we move forward, it's completely comprehensive in that we're looking at every single opportunity beyond FEMA. We understand that there'll be community development block funds available just for hazard and, and, and community regrowth, so we want to make sure we're looking at everything that open, the door opens to as well at the same time.
Well, I think that suggests why we should have a broad range of projects and not just focus on, you know, one specific thing. Like, we probably can get elevated, oh, I'm sorry, we can probably get help elevating houses to a variety of people, I would imagine, not just FEMA.
Yeah, I should say, our, our grant folks know more than just FEMA too.
Right.
So, if we did this item four and proposed future actions, looking at all the projects, they would include other grant options that are available as well as.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on now to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, or Carl?
Um, did you want to bring something up about the Wonder Garden, sir?
Well, yeah, but you have public comments and I can do it after that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. And I think Arlene's got a couple of comments.
Okay. Public comment, members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
Hey, Rick Steinweiler, I know I can't get an answer to this question, but is this a 20-year flood, a 10-year flood, a 100-year-old flood? Is there any way to say what a 100-year flood is or a 10-year flood or whatever we got here? Nobody's come up with that. Thank you.
Here's the flood.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you take, let's see if I can do this right. If you take and look at my presentation from the 24th, you'll see that it's analyzed and it's greater than the 100-year flood that we had here.
That's what I saw.
It, it was. This is the worst, this is the worst flood of record from precipitation that Bonita Springs has ever suffered.
And the inches of rain in two months or something?
No, it's, it's more in the 50s over this, this year of record. And actually more than that, I think I've seen about 60, 64 inches so far for our region. And those records are available from the Water Management District. But this, Irma was a, combined with that four-day rain that we got when Harvey was going on, exceeded the loading of a 100-year flood that they all designed for.
Does that, does that mean we can give up and not do it for 100 years?
Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Nobody gets it.
Good evening.
How are you? I live in Bonita, Pinecrest Lane, between pretty much Riverview Drive and Pinecrest, on Pinecrest Lane.
And your name, ma'am?
I'm Jasmine Rivera.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Thanks. I still have trash and debris behind my house. I have a really large property. I'm one of the, well, I can't say the lucky ones that they built the house all the way up high. I still manage to get flood in there. I'm not here for that. In the back of my house, I have my own property that I'm not able to build on. I've been here for about two years and a half. And then with this comes with all the surprises of the flooding and everything. I still have trash and debris, branches and trees. I cannot get to it, it's not safe. I live, I don't know if it's what it's called, is a canal. I've called a couple of people, everybody's transferring me to other parts, and I haven't found the magic person to help me out. I'm currently not living there because of the mold I have inside my house. I just want to know, who do I talk to to get that taken care of? Because any more rain that comes there is going to flood again in the back of my house. I also have, the trees are marked permanently, so it looks like it's been collecting water over the years, because it's just a big ditch. I would like one day, I mean, I can't see myself selling the house anytime soon, everything's for sale for 300,000 and up forward. I need help and I don't know where else to go. I've made many phone calls, I've written many emails, I haven't gotten the help that I would really appreciate. And it would help everybody else, because we just have like a cesspool of dirty filthy water and it's been there, I'm hitting two months with that same water, just stagnant water sitting there.
Could, please leave your name and address and number with us and we'll be sure to follow up.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, Arlene, you had something?
Before she goes, can I finish something, actually without Atkins, you can stay here, but it just relates to what we were talking about, about the work schedules, et cetera, okay? So, so I do understand from talking to Matt, the importance of Logan and the fortuitous nature of the fact that it still is being done and still giving us an opportunity to get in there quickly and have an engineering solution with respect to taking that water south. So, I mean, I'm okay with that, but I think we got lucky there in terms of the timing. However, well, not however, my, my, the second point though is Jim talked about he has a deliverable due in December, and I'm going to state something, and Jim, if I'm wrong, just come up and tell me I'm wrong, all right? And I'm, I'm assuming that's going to relate to, among other things, the different potential, what is he calling them, solutions? Potential solutions that are outlined here. And I'm assuming that's going to have some rough cost, not an exact cost number, it's going to have some rough, it's not going to have final designs or anything, but it's going to have a rough sense of what the projects could be and what they would be costing. And I'm assuming if he's going to do that, he's going to have to talk to an engineering firm to kind of truth his numbers with respect to that. Let's see what Jim has to say. Sorry to make you walk back and forth and, yeah.
Why is it working up, just kind of piggyback on that, Pete, and also wouldn't it, the priorities may change also by, when he starts looking at these.
Yeah, but anyhow.
On, on those things, which I don't have the assistance of Atkins in on getting a more exact figure.
Right.
I will use examples from similar projects that have been costed out and constructed, and then make adjustments for inflation.
Okay.
So I do, as I've done in my climate change work, I do know what it costs to build an armored dike with a pump.
Oh, okay.
I do know what it costs to do a lot of these projects based on prior examples.
Okay.
But these were not, they're not going to be as good of accurate to a specific project estimate as what Atkins can do for you.
Okay.
And that's why they're here. They're, they'll give you a much better number for, say, the Logan Flowway than I could, but I can give you a number for the Logan Flowway based on other flowways that have been constructed.
So let me ask, maybe, if you don't mind, Fred, ask Atkins.
Yeah.
Leaving aside the Logan, and I think one of you were mentioning kind of what you could do within that 35,000 as it relates to these kind of projects he's talking about. Or you can, or you can't, I'm not, I'm not trying to negotiate a deal here, just trying to understand what you can do.
I understand. No, doing, we, at one time, there was doing some cost estimating
Yeah.
at the beginning of this. That was one of the options that was thrown out, and that's something we could certainly do.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe we, or, you know, maybe a small task of this could be a supplement what he's doing in terms of the ones that he has problems, or the ones that he can't cost as well.
Okay.
Or the ones that are really big that you want to get a better cost on. So there's, there's some of that that could be done as well.
So I guess I hear you saying that your, your, your time is being occupied somewhat with respect to Logan and that's eating up that, is that what I'm hearing? And so we need to think about something else, or no?
Well, I think it, we can all decide, I mean, we're certainly still open to changing. I think what I'm hearing is that the mitigation grants are probably at the top of the list.
Yeah, but first we need the projects to know what we're going to put in for.
Well, is that, was that all of that, the mitigation grants stuff? Were his, were for his projects?
Just to look at which projects could be most easily and what grants would.
Okay, so, and we could, so we could do costs for those projects. I mean, that would be one of the things.
So for that.
Which might be different, I don't know, outside of what Jim is doing. Because I'm not exactly sure with what, all the details of what he was doing.
Can I ask you, Fred, just?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so, you know, we, so, let me do the Cliff Notes version of this, right? We've talked about different concepts, sending more water south to the Coquahatchee, which is turning into Logan, but maybe other things as well, possibilities, all right? We've talked about holding more water on the land in parts of the DRGR, whether it's in our DRGR or outside. We've talked about a major reservoir project as a possibility. We've talked about connections east to west across 75, and we've talked about the possibility of individual fixes and hotspots along the river. And that, as far as I'm concerned, is more or less what I hear Jim Beaver talking about in these various solutions. So, the question is, how do we get to the point most quickly where we have, as best as we can, and Jim's indicated some ability with respect to it, but as best as we can, all of these things, or most of them, doped out, so we can figure out what the costing would be, so we're better positioning ourselves with respect to going after FEMA grants or other grants? Is that fair?
No, it's, it's, it's a very fair question.
Okay.
Here, here's the reality. $35,000 over all those neighborhoods, trying to come up with cost estimates, and you don't want to just evaluate one thing for Quinn Street. Minimum, you want to look at two things, I would hope.
Right, okay.
I, I don't see how you could do it for that kind of money and come up with anything that's credible.
And one fair point was.
I think, I think they can give you best, with Jim's, his guesstimate, they can put a professional guesstimate on it, and the two together is better than nothing. It's way better. But it's not going to be a, I wouldn't want to hang my hat on it.
But we're not looking.
Yeah, but I think, but yeah, I think.
How accurate does it have to be, actually?
Well, I guess that's kind of my, sorry, you know.
Well, I'm just saying, we, we need a, a pretty credible ballpark for a lot of these projects for us to decide which, how to prioritize and which would be most effective and what it's all going to do, you know?
We could provide a review of his costs and some comments that may make them better. That's, that's another, I'm just, I'm throwing out different options. I know we're all over the place, but.
Well, it's good.
I'd like, you know.
That's okay at this stage.
I would like to do all the, I mean, I'm interested in doing virtually all the projects that he has suggested.
At some point, yeah.
And any others that you or he together, as you get more into this and you do the, the water, what's that called, budget kind of thing and the overall thing, that something else might come up that's not apparent right now.
Sure.
And, and I, and I don't.
Hope that, hopefully there is.
My own opinion, not being a hydraulist or, or an engineer, is that you're going, we're going to need many different kinds of projects, all working together to really get something that's substantially different than what we already have. And hopefully we can get it done before the next 100-year storm comes, or
Which could be next year.
The next 25-year storm, you know, I mean, I think that's, you know, we have to look at what we're doing. So, that's why I think it's important that we don't foreclose on some of these other options so that we make our decision. I'm fine with Logan or whatever it is. Can we get somebody else to, since it looks like we already have a project in place, can the South Florida Water Management get in there and help us there to do the conveyance if they already agree to it? And then work on projects that we don't have sort of agreement on? Maybe that would be more practical.
And can I hop in on that?
Yeah.
That's something that, and Fred's going tomorrow.
And I was going to go over what I was going to say.
Yeah, well, part of it is that they did hold out that Ernie Marks was going to look into
Right.
what engineering services can, with all due respect, what engineering services could be made available to us from the Water Management District.
In that area, right?
I mean, this is their district and it has flooded.
Correct, so.
Greg, did you have something?
Well, I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, that when we agreed first with Mr. Beaver, then we came to an engineer, I thought they were going to work in conjunction with each other, not with two parallel systems, you know? And that's what, when you brought it up last time, that's kind of why we agreed on it, was we thought that this was going to give, I don't want to call it credibility, it's going to give a number to what additional credibility and numbers to what Mr. Beaver was doing, not to run in a different direction. I guess that's my confusion, just helped me, bring me back in. I mean, I'm all for it, but that's the way it was pitched, that it was going to be.
Well, they, they are going to work together.
Okay.
The only thing it's, there's a couple thing that happened, we gave that number on the studies, 1.85 million that's in that. So they don't, they don't need to do that because we already set a number. Now, I think the other thing we want to do is, whatever they do with Jim on, let's just pull Quinn Street out. You want to at least evaluate a couple options in pricing. You don't want to just evaluate a dike, or you don't want to just evaluate some kind of pumping. You want to, at least you want to have two things. I would suggest one of them would be elevating those people that want to elevate, seeing what that would run.
Can I make a suggestion? And I know you've obviously been breaking your back on this, I know Matt has too, but would it be possible somehow to just come up with a list? I mean, you, I think you already did it once. Come up with a list with Jim of, as best you can, every individual project or area that could be studied, and then we can just look at that and then see what in reality we can or can't do with respect to coming up with some preliminary estimate of what it would cost to investigate each one of those.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what we're doing, but we're not going to do 30.
Well, we should know what they are, I guess is the point.
Yeah, well, you, you pretty well did. The core area is what we talked about primarily. The core area was everything from 75 all to the west side of Parkway. It was also up IBE going that way, Pinecrest over and picking up Lake Shawamar, picking up, what is it, Morton Grove, and then Citrus Park for good measure.
But then we have a, and it's, it's an important, it's a chicken and egg, but it's an important chicken and egg.
Yeah.
All right? Which is, my recollection is we did that for purposes of the legislative agenda.
Well, and that's kind of where I was going to piggyback on that, was, just real quick, is piggyback on that. That 1.8 was to do all the things, I think that you're looking for, like when you keep saying about the Quinn area, two options. I, I'm under the
Oh, yeah, but.
Understanding or impression that that's what that 1.8 was going to be for, is to do the design and to look at those.
To evaluate three or four different items, do the design.
That's what I was saying, I don't not expecting Atkins to do that. Again, going back to my original, I thought Atkins was going to be a tool for Mr. Beaver to use to say, what is plausible? What is a rough estimate? Where should you be focusing your efforts on right now? Until we get the 1.8 million from the state. So what can we do?
Yeah, and I guess what
We're getting traction.
I guess what I'm trying to get down to is that you, right now, Jim is tending to say one idea in an area, and I'm saying you want to look at at least a couple, number one. Number two, you're going to be, on the 24th of January, FEMA's first round of grant bell rings to where, there's, what is it, 90 days or 60?
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
That's why we're pushing.
So we, so we're trying to get projects, and I think what you're going to have to do on those is say, we, we want to look at doing both of these and whichever one's the best, we're going to do it. You're not going to know.
Yeah, but what we do, I think we're all talking the same thing, but it's important that we be clear.
I don't think so.
Well, all right.
I think some of you think that we're going to have one idea for Quinn that we're going to go with in that FEMA grant, and I'm telling you, you could have one.
No, I don't think anybody up here is saying that.
I don't think so.
What we need to do is have the information to make a decision about these areas and these projects.
And I'm.
Not, not, that's what we need.
Yeah, but I, but I'm trying Yeah, but I, but I'm trying to say.
What are you trying to say?
I.
Can't do that?
I don't, you're not gonna have the information to choose which is the best solution for Quinn Street or the west of the Parkway by January the twenty-fourth. It ain't gonna happen, you don't have the money.
May I, may I?
Well, you're presuming we don't have the money.
We don't have the money to do it. Even if, even if you had the time, you don't have the money to make a decision like at Quinn Street or west of the Parkway, what's the best way to fix it? That's what I'm trying to tell you. Now, if you think.
So what are we doing?
We're coming up with possibilities that might work out with ballpark figures, and then if you want to try and pick one of those and write a FEMA grant, you could do it. I would tend to write, we're gonna look into these in more depth in those areas.
In, in the.
Go ahead, please.
Work that we just did for Collier County, the, you spent what, the first three hundred thousand dollars with coming up with this kind of answer that, that that you're looking for in terms of a level of detail of understanding the whole watershed and prioritizing projects. Would that be fair to say?
No, that's not, I wouldn't say this is a specific project. I'll, I don't know if you want me to talk to that, I was gonna make another suggestion, then I'll go on that. I, I don't, I don't even.
Well, you've heard, you've heard the discussion.
Yeah, I understood, so I got that. So one is, I don't know if seen his scope. So if we could see his scope, maybe we could see what we could do to complement that. I mean, I, I haven't seen it. I know exactly, I know he's been helping you, but what, what he's giving you for deliverables, and I had no idea until tonight.
Consider it done.
Okay, so if we did that, then maybe we could give you some more input. Maybe that's, how about that? I mean, that's a suggestion.
We got a meeting next Wednesday, and so.
We do?
Yeah.
Oh.
City Council meeting next Wednesday, yes.
They keep coming.
Yep.
Another.
Like a bad pin.
Fred, seriously.
Jim, you're coming back up?
Jim, indeed.
Oh, here he comes.
We're, we're trouble, I'm sorry.
The scope, my scope of services is no mystery. It's a public document.
Yeah.
It's out, it's outlined in my slide.
Right.
Yeah, it was sent to them.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it clear, for everybody.
You're saying it was sent to him, but they didn't, he's just asking for it.
Yeah, okay.
Greg, it was, it was emailed to all three companies before we ever talked to them.
But you gentlemen say you don't have it, is that right?
It doesn't matter, they, they can get it.
Yeah, let them, let them get it and review it.
So it's, they'll, they'll look at the scope.
Yeah.
The reason we brought Atkins on board was to assist in the project that I am working on.
Yes.
The mission creep that's developing in this project is going beyond the scope of work that I agreed to do with you. I will do the project that I'm doing with you, even though I understand we don't have the contract signed yet. And right now I've been, been working
We're good for the money.
With you.
We're good for the money.
I know that. And I work for the, your community. I mean, this is regional planning and it's what we do.
Right.
So we're, we're, we're working with you on it. As things go beyond my scope, that's fine, you can make, make the arrangements you need to do to get those more specific things from the engineering skills that engineers have and, and are able to do. Um, I am not going to do a project that's outside the scope of the agreement we've made, alright? Unless we decide we want to put together another, another plan. So what I'm going to do is, I'm trying to work here with you, and I've shown you, to reduce flooding throughout the whole city. And to do that by reducing the excess flows which are going into your stream systems. And I've found a wide range of different projects, a whole suite of which all should be implemented. The order that I show them to you in the presentations are things that you can be do now, things that we do a little later, things that we do a little later. And so as you go down the list, you get things that happen later, or, or those long-term ongoing things like changing your stormwater rules.
Right.
And so that's, that's what the order means. It's not that I think project number one's more important than two.
No.
They're, yeah, they're all.
Easily attainable.
And, and something that needs to be done now, getting rid of the debris from the canals, getting it cleared out from, from there. That's something to do right, right now, right away. I will take a look, if you want to, at those ways of addressing flooding in some of the residential areas, which are considered in planning as extreme solutions. Um, and you've seen this in my climate change work, what I call the New Orleans solution, or the Galveston solution, or the city of Venice solution. New Orleans is where you dike and you pump.
Excuse me, I don't think that's what we're suggesting.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
No, that's not at all what you're hearing.
Because when we're talking about different options for some of these areas.
No.
Okay, and things like building a dike, pumps, which I heard in the conversation. I, functionally, I can put that into the report. But at the, right, right now, I'm saying, and, and what I've done with you, and like you've been agreeable to and always support it, is to look for a total city solution.
So can I, well, go ahead.
I just want to ask a question relevant to this, is you, when you were speaking earlier, you said that you had met or interacted with various communities, and then you are aware of certain issues that are specific to specific communities.
Mm-hmm.
Could you just provide those intuitive or whatever professional opinions that you have, specific to a community, not telling us all the nuances, but you must have an idea that this one requires snagging, this one requires the role of storm water management, this one, maybe it's not as simple as that, but when, but I thought that that was the kind of thing in a very general way, that we would be getting out and that you could provide us.
And you, and you will have that.
And then specifically, if you say snagging, they'll say it's gonna cost fifty thousand dollars. And, and that way we can determine whether we're gonna handle all thirty communities that are affected, or whether this one's totally impractical and we have to handle it a different way.
Mm-hmm.
But it's sort of like, it's, it's, it's sort of like a, using your experience, that you, you don't have to do a complete study, you just get, you know what, what the problem is because you've discussed it with them. But in those that you can't make that decision on, we need to do that too.
Okay, well, I can show you for the projects I've identified, plus these individual situations that have come up, like for example, the one community that never completed its stormwater management system. Okay, and that'll be identified in the report.
That would be a good one.
And whether that's costed out or not, that'll depend upon the time and effort that's available from Atkins for the somewhat limited contract.
Like the problem, at Morton Grove, which I think is, I don't know what the problem is there.
It's soluble, and it was actually one of the things that we've identified that can be worked on.
That's what I would like to know, what they are.
And that's, and I, and I apologize, that's what I thought Atkins was coming on board to do.
Well, I, I, my understanding when we were hiring the engineering firm, is that they would cost out the projects that I had identified.
Exactly.
Right.
And so that was my understanding.
Gentlemen, is that your understanding as well?
That was our understanding when we were.
Okay.
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
And, and so, but what, but what I've heard and seen is that there's other things that you want done, and some of these other things.
Let's, let's stop right there, seriously. And keep, we're in agreement where we are now, let's stay in that space, okay?
Yeah.
Let's not, what somebody said, or what.
Yeah, but I, I do think we need to understand what's being done. And if Jim is referring to, and, and, by the way, we're not trying to get more for our money, we're not trying to have mission creep. What we're trying to do is, I think what everybody, including you, is trying to do, uh, is address everything that should be addressed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, particularly with respect to people who are sitting in houses that were flooded, who will logically have an, a question, which is, what has the city done to look at my situation, because many of them are not alone, or our situation, with respect to where we are? So I'd rather leave money and mission creep and all that off the table and just talk about, and ask about, what are we doing with respect to that? So to me, that means, and it, so this is nothing new. Now, whether you thought it was part of your mandate is a different issue, alright? It's, what we talked about were various words were used, but there were the hotspots or particular areas along the river, they were identified, they, they were identified last time as the core. Which is, alright, um, and it weren't one or two, there were many. And my personal view is, now whether it's part of your mandate, Jim, is another issue, alright? Um, my, my personal view is what we owe to them is to, is to be in a position, not on the back of an envelope, not like I think it's cost prohibitive or something like that, but to show them, uh, our professionals have come in, they have looked at this, and this is what, um, are the possible solutions or no solutions
Mm-hmm.
to what their situation is. And I wouldn't put adjectives and adverbs, hang them on no solutions, whether they're extreme or unusual or anything like that. These are the possible solutions. Um, I think that's what we owe to everybody. Now, whether that's part of your mandate, or whether we need to expand your mandate, is, is to me, an ancillary issue, but I do think that's what we should be looking at.
Okay, well, I would like to have some discussions with you, and I do come here very regularly as I'm working on the project. To what extent in the alternatives analysis, do you want to go to project designs which are been done by others, in other situations, which are not good solutions? But nevertheless, they saw them as a solution, albeit temporary.
Well, it's a, good solutions or bad solutions are pejorative terms, and they need to have science of some sort behind them.
Well, science that, it's, it's very clear that when you build a structure, and that structure's going to fail and cause worse flooding.
Right.
That was a bad solution.
Right, so, so to take that example, I think what you would be saying is, we've looked at this, but we're concerned that this is, will fail.
Mm-hmm.
This will not work. But I think that's, that analysis is what we owe to the people.
And that will be in the report. I want to make it clear, as, as I'm meeting with the many different citizens and communities, I'm gathering data from them. They're telling me what they've experienced and what they know. I'm explaining to them what projects we're working on at this point that could address some of the things that they're experiencing, and, and could, you know, deal with what they have. But when people say, if, if anyone asks me, and that, they, many haven't asked me this, but a few have said, what's the city doing, I refer them to the city.
Right.
And I explain to them, I'm not a representative of the city, and I've had to tell others I don't represent FEMA, I'm not with the federal government, I'm not, you know, with DER, I'm not with the Water Management District. And I direct them to the police people who have the answer to that question. So I guess the reason I'd come up is I didn't want you to think necessarily that we're on two different parallel tracks, we're working together. We're, we're in the field working together, okay? And, but if you intervene, if, intermediately as you go, change the things that need to be done, then you do, but those aren't necessarily things I'm going to do.
Well, I guess my thought is, is that, when I made the correlation going down different ways, is Logan is, is one way. I don't want the thirty-five thousand dollar to be cobbled up by the Logan, and you still have questions, and we still have questions about what you're doing that needs an engineer. That's my concern, that your needs come first.
Mm-hmm.
Of what this report and what we originally were wanting, citywide, with a little emphasis on the core, let's call it, or the box, as you call it, with a little bit more emphasis on that. That's what my emphasis is for Atkins. Is to help you, and now, if there is money left in the pot, to do a Logan or to do another ancillary thing, that maybe you would be, help a little bit more, then sure, by all means, use, use all the money up in the pot if we're gonna use it. But my, my thought, or my interpretation of why we hired him was to help you.
And, and to help with this deliverable.
To help with this deliverable at the end of the three months.
And then as you've made your decisions, and as the community's made its decision which project it wants to implement, then you're gonna let other RFPs for, you know, the design and permitting and so forth.
That's the one, the one point eight million that we.
Two, two points. Logan has to have.
Let's bring this in for a landing, because we're.
Yeah, right, I agree.
Spinning our wheels here to a point.
Logan has to have some stormwater information given before they start building. They're gonna be building it real quick. So like it or not, that has to be done. If you don't want them to do it, then it ain't gonna get done, and that means when we do do it, it's gonna cost more money. Second thing, I want to go back to a discussion. I've heard we don't expect analysis, we don't expect that. Yet, when Mr. Beaver, A, and Atkins both said, when it came to like west of Imperial Parkway, they didn't feel diking or burming was gonna work, the comment was made, well, we want to see an analysis first and have a cost and a, and all that. So, but then a minute ago, we said, no, we don't have to do that, but I just want to remind you, you, you kind of spoke with two different, two different ways.
We're gonna leave it there.
Leave it there.
We're gonna leave it, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it there.
Yeah.
We're gonna leave it there.
It refers to Fred for tomorrow, that's all.
Go ahead.
Fred's, Fred's going to that meeting tomorrow. Is there any way that Southwest Florida Water Management can help with that analysis for the Coochahatchee, on the engineering, that's all.
Briefly, here's what I was gonna do.
Get it free from them.
I was number one, because I'm positive that many of their board members, because they're not from over here, have not seen the aerial photos that you saw. So I intend to show that to them. Secondly, and talk about how big the problem really is. Secondly, uh, I was going to show them the legislative initiatives.
Right.
And ask them, I was gonna key off what we said, Governor Scott several times publicly has said he wants this fixed, and he's looking to South Florida Water Management to be lead in doing that. So I was gonna bring that in.
Very good point.
Next point, I was gonna ask them to specifically endorse it, point out that Phil Flood has been on board working on these things with us, which is true. And ask them to support it, to legis, and I was also going to say, I think they might want to just consider helping fund part of it. Then, I was also going to give them the letter that Mayor Simmons wrote on the surplus land.
He already got, he already got that, but give it to me.
But I was gonna give it to him in person, because.
Well, we gave it to him in person.
Yeah, I'm gonna give it to all the members in person, is what I'm saying. So I'm gonna do that. Then I was gonna tell them about the other things we're doing. I was gonna close by saying that we believe that our residents, that we're flooded, have a right to expect that we're gonna do everything we can to mitigate flooding where possible and feasible and all that, and that we got to have South Florida Water Management as an active partner. We want their expertise, we want their support. And that we're gonna have to do a little more thinking outside the box, and I'm gonna propose that hopefully we will see agenda items henceforth where they're talking about possibility of solutions and projects for Benita. And we can feed those through to Rick Barber, we can feed it to the, the executive director that Deputy Mayor O'Flynn met with, all these people. So that's, that's the first step. And I would expect it, that we need to keep that presence up, because they've had three meetings so far since that flood, and there's not been one thing about Benita, Key West, or Everglades City. And I think, but I think that we can help stimulate that.
I just said one, one or two suggestions?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, I, I wouldn't be asking, I would be reminding them that they said they would look into making engineering, um, what would be the word, expertise, expertise available. This is not the first time it's being asked. He said he would look into having that expertise available, and that expertise would be not necessarily from the west coast.
Right.
Alright, so what I'm getting at is I wouldn't start at the bottom, I would start at the top. He's already said that, so that's a follow-up, you're saying what work has been done with, with respect to that?
Right.
And then the other thing I would actually get, I would also get into is this concept that we know in a previous meeting, an interlocal agreement was mentioned, and we'd like to have you all work with us on an interlocal agreement. Just like they have an interlocal agreement with Collier County with respect to their structures, we have natural structures, but it doesn't mean they shouldn't be taking care of our natural structures the way they're taking care of
Right.
the others down there.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Arlene?
I just, mine was just a follow-up to remind everyone about the storm-ready community certification that we're going through, and on November fourteenth, the community is welcome to attend the SkyWarn training, which will be held at Fire District Four. Additionally, we do need to confirm two additional seats to go to the training on December seventh at the National Weather Service. Councilmember DeWitt has agreed to go as well as Chief Dagel and myself, and we do need to fill two additional seats, whether that's filled by council or other employees. Um, this is for the tour of the, this is for our certification for storm-ready and the tour of the National Weather Service in Ruskin, Flori- for storm ready and the tour of the National Weather Service in Ruskin, Florida.
What were those dates again?
On Tuesday, November 14th, from 1:00 to 3:00 at Fire District Station Number Four is the Skywarn training. And then on December 7th, at 10:30 a.m. is the city's tour of the National Weather Service in Ruskin. And we do need to have a total of five representatives. We have three covered, so we need to determine whether the other two will be council members or if you wish for another staff person to attend.
Council, what's?
Don't you think that maybe-
Yeah, no, yeah, Amy?
You go in, what, two hats? You go as two people.
He's going as two people, but he's still one person, so we have to have five.
Does he count in the five? Does he count in the five?
He counts as one of the five.
She's already counted it somehow.
Okay.
Fred?
I think the staff would be-
Okay, Fred can go.
But don't you think the staff should, somebody from the staff who has more longevity than the council?
Staff members are going, all right.
But more, do you think you need more staff people?
Well, all we're doing is, you know what, we need five. If, if council members can go, we certainly want to invite you and encourage you to go.
Fred, Fred makes four.
But bottom line is, if, if we have one council member, you know, or a couple of council members, sorry about that, Greg, then the rest are going to be filled by staff members.
Right.
Or other members of the staff, like the fire department staff.
Fred makes four. Peter?
No.
Okay, Mike, I, I don't know. So Fred makes four, and then let's bring one more staff.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I had, I, real quick, on the priority trail, you know, the ECL prepared that page with the link. Happy to say, Benita Bay came on board, added about 200 signatures, so we're over, they're over 500 and some odd signatures. Carl is going to take and work with something that I did to try to get it out more broadly in the city. So that's all good news on that, and like, I'll talk more about that next week. On the quadrant, had an excellent meeting with Secretary Nandam and two of his senior advisors up in Bartow, Matt and I did. And I know Matt's here, I think Matt, I know Matt would agree, we found it an extremely constructive meeting, that they really came, they, they conveyed a sincerity about stepping it up and working with us to get this quadrant thing done. And I'll send more of a memo around about some of the details and that, because it's late here. The last thing is the Wonder Gardens, we have our workshop on Monday, and I heard Pete, you're going to be on the phone, I'm going to be asked to chair the meeting. So I circulated a memo that I actually did months ago to council today to deal with, you know, topics that will, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but is it okay as, as a guide to work through?
Yes.
My idea is that we'll focus mostly on stewardship and what we're doing together, and not get into every weeds on details, not that those details aren't important, but really to understand what the vision is, what they're thinking about, how they're going to realize what their vision is. And we buy in, or as it would be, we don't buy in, I hope to think we will, with respect to that vision. And then they go forth and work up a capital plan or whatever that they need to do with respect to that. I'm not saying there won't be additional questions, but that's the sense of what I'm suggesting for the meeting. Is that fair?
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Fred, anything else? Amy?
No.
Greg?
I'm good.
Motion to adjourn? Carl?
I just want to thank Councilmember DeWitt, because he will be representing the city as an elected official on Monday in Tallahassee. And going up there and will be appearing before the select committee, as well as staying over for Tuesday and walking the halls with Carol. And of course, that will be our, I'm sure, first of many visits this year to Tallahassee on our important funding requests.
How often, how much in advance are we going to get those dates? So they're not just off the cuff?
Well, they're not off the cuff. They are based upon the, the schedules of the elected officials in Tallahassee, or their major staff folks. So that's, I mean, I, I realize we want to try to get as much notice as we can, but we're not always going to be able to accomplish that.
Can we have a list of those dates? Or do we have them already? And if we have them already-
No, we don't have additional dates.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Okay, it might, it might well depend on how things happen, because Tallahassee can be pretty fluid, as you know, and it's sometimes pretty scary as well, but-
Right.
So, but we'll try to do a better job. I'll chat with Carol about that.
Yeah. Okay. Audrey, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.